Say eight o'clock, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't have nothing. I'm just shadowing you down.
All right, we'll see.
I think it's something. Yeah, those trucks are still showing this.
He got, he got stabbed. You'll get everything.
I ain't happy with it. Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, the rest of Chicago. It's gonna give the community. They're not taking care of the whole lot. What about the other two lines up here? DMV. They're all white. They don't want to do this. They don't get any.
Come real quiet. Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we have gathered tonight to participate in the governance of our community. We ask for your divine guidance and we ask for a moment of silence in respect for the loss of life on the University of Virginia campus. Please give these families comfort and your love to get them through this unbelievable ordeal. Please intervene in our lives that violence is not the answer to problems that exist. Let us create an atmosphere of compassion and forgiveness. May all present tonight be mindful of the Thanksgiving season, giving blessings for what we have and thanks. Continue to let our nation be the leader in the world for liberty and freedom and the hope of the world. We ask for all of this in your holy name and let us all say, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance, a tear and flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I'd like to announce that Councilman Johnson will not be present this evening and has been excused. With that being said, the Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of November the 16th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by City Council, the City of Suffolk, in the closed meeting.
Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next item is approval of the minutes from the May 18th, 2022 work session and regular session. And a motion would be in order, council. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Williams. Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Fawcett, can you please cast your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. I will now move on to the consent agenda items and adoption of the agenda. At this time, we will consider removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wishes to vote on a specific item separately and a motion would be required. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 16. Mr. City Manager, please provide City Council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Staff is in receipt of a written request from the applicant for item number 16, CUP 2021-013, to have this item removed from your agenda this evening and have it postponed for an additional 90 days until your February 16th, 2023 meeting. As you may be aware, this item was continued from your city council's August 17th, 2022 meeting. The following are the specifics. Item 16 is a public hearing to consider in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a surface mining operation, arable pit, on property located at zoning map nine, parcel three, account number 252626000, CUP 2021-13. At this, at this time, I would ask city council's consideration of a motion to amend the November 16th, 2022 city council agenda to defer the public hearing listed as item 16 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented and schedule item 16 as part of the February 15th, 2023 city council meeting agenda.
Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 16, please note that the city manager has advised that the applicant is requested to continue consideration of the project to the February 15th, 2023 city council meeting. If it is council's desire, a motion would be in order to amend the agenda to defer public hearing item number 16 to the February 15th, 2023 city council meeting and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented. Councilperson Butler Barlow.
So moved, Mayor.
We have motion for approval from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Councilman Williams?
I second it.
And a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Fawcett?
The only part I wanted to bring up here in this particular issue on item 16 is if you go back and look at the record, we've continued this from the planning commission, starting in April, council in May, to August. Here we are in November. We're gonna go into the next year of February of the next year. I'm, I'm kind of inclined to not grant a 90-day, but I would prefer to make it a 30 or 60-day motion instead because this thing is just constantly going too far out. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to move this to a 60-day hearing and not a 90-day hearing.
So we have a substitute motion by Councilman Fawcett to allow for a 60-day continuance, which would make it January something, but they would have fallen.
January.
It, it, the motion would need to be date-specific. It's not so much about the number of the dates.
Just a second meeting.
So it would be, the second meeting would be January 18th.
January 18th.
And January 18th. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, hearing no second, then we have a motion on the floor from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Who's, which one are you, which one are you seconding?
Rock, Councilman Fawcett.
Okay, we have a second from Vice Mayor Bennett of Councilman Fawcett's motion for a 60-day continuance. Do we have any further discussion of that motion?
To January 18th.
To January?
18th.
18th, January 18th.
And just to clarify, Councilmember Fawcett, would that also, that motion, was the motion that was presented by Councilmember Butler Barlow and seconded by Councilmember Williams, would be to defer the public hearing, public hearing item 16 to February 15th and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that that's included in your motion.
Can we do have any further discussion? Councilman Fawcett's motion. Councilman Goldberg?
What's the 30 days? What's the, we own 60, we got 90. Is there a push to this other than we've gone, we've gone back so far that, you know, April, whatever it might be, that 30 extra days would be intolerable?
Councilman Fawcett?
I, I, we've had continuous continuance here and I know that the applicant's doing his due diligence, but at the same time, this is going into the next year, into how many months, almost eight months, whatever. And it's time enough to make a decision and I think I'd prefer we didn't vote tonight on it. I could ask for a vote tonight, but giving him at least 60 days is pretty much in the norm of what we've given other folks that have come and asked for a delay of theirs to go 60 days. We very seldom ever go 90. And I just don't think that this would be the time to go 90 days. We've set the precedent that we've done 60 over the past, but not so much as 90. This would have to be a special circumstance for me to go 90 days. I want to just get this thing on the table and let's make a decision and get it done. So that's basically why I decided to back it up. I think giving him 60 is ample enough time. He's had since April 19th of last year to do something here. And I'm, and I'm, I'm all in favor of giving him the benefit of the doubt, but I think that we need to move this thing ahead and, and get this on where we can get it heard to a vote.
Council, any other comments? Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor from Councilman Fawcett to approve the agenda with the amendment tabling item number 16 for 60 days. I have a, just a few comments before we vote if that's where we are. This has been going on for a long time and I know the citizens want some type of resolution. I'm not sure, see, like Councilman Goldberg alerted to, I'm not sure whether 60 or 90 days would really make a difference. We just need to make a decision. I was wondering, is the applicant here today? Is anyone representing the applicant? If I could? Okay, if, if I could ask you a question, and I know, I mean, obviously, the issue is the roadways, the, the major issue. So I would assume that what you're trying to do is to come up with a resolution for that.
That is what, what my client is working on. There's certain things, you know, that, that are attorney-client privilege area there, but that is essentially the issue he's, he's trying to remedy going forward and, and, you know, we understand where the project and the feedback we got from Planning Commission. That's, that's why we've, we pushed it back like we have. I, I would say this with regard to Councilman Fawcett's concern about the pushback and, and what the precedent is there. I do think ultimately there is, there is a resource there and, and my client has worked very diligently and, and is, is working on alternatives to, to get to that. But the underlying issue of, of where something is and in relation to, to the population around it, I, I think is gonna remain regardless. So whether it's, it's on this right now or whether it comes back on another application down the road is, it's gonna be something that needs to be addressed. My client has, has worked very hard to get a lot of things in order and, and frankly, just needs a bit more time to have something that, that we think, you know, can pass and, and will hopefully satisfy some of the population around that area who have some legitimate concerns. So that's, that's what they're working on.
Is this something you think you can accomplish in 60 days if you need to?
You know, the selfishly, Mayor.
I'd rather have 90.
You know, it's obviously, we'd rather have 90, but, you know, if, if the alternatives are, are none or 60, we're, we're gonna prefer 60. But if, if 90 is possible, you know, from a standpoint of, of taking up you all's time, you know, the difference between that 90-day and 60-day and certainly the notice that would be available to everyone is, is still there, you know? Nothing can happen until it's voted yea or nay down the road. So it's, it's not like we're trying to spring anything on anybody. But, you know, I, we'd prefer the 90 if possible, but, but if 60 is all we get, 60 is all we get.
And excuse me, do you mind just stating your name and address for the record so we, you know, we can reflect who you are and who you're representing?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm Whit Harper. I'm from Saunders and Ahada and I represent the applicant on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Fawcett? No? Yeah? Well, I had you on there. There you go.
If, if, you know, we can bring this thing to a closure in 90 days, I'm okay with it, but 90 days from now, I don't want him to come back and go, hey, oh, by the way, we need another 60 days. So I'm willing to withdraw my motion and leave it 90, but we need resolution in 90 days and that's it. That's where I'm at. I'm gonna vote in 90 days with this. Up or down, done. No more dragging it out. I'm willing to move that motion back to Ms. Barlow's original motion.
I'll second her original motion.
I think that.
No, no, okay, it's already.
We already had a second.
So it would just be a matter of you withdrawing your motion and if the Vice Mayor can sense that as well?
I will withdraw my second.
And I assume you're withdrawing your substitute motion, Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, with that being said, I wholeheartedly concur with you, 90 days from now, there needs to be a resolution, period. Now, one other thing that I did, I conferred with the city attorney as to the process in that this is obviously, if, if we're trying to create a different ingress, egress, different traffic patterns, this is significant to the project. And by tabling it rather than turning it down, when we turn it down, it would require the applicant to wait a year and go back through the entire process. However, it's my understanding that the proposed changes would be submitted to the Planning Department and the Planning Department can request that it go back to the Planning Commission. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, if, if the changes are substantial enough that requires more input and more review by the Planning Commission, then the Planning Department can say that this is basically a new application and starts the process anew. So it depends on how significant the changes are and without knowing what they're planning on doing, I can't tell you whether it will or will not.
They're gonna recommend that or not?
Right.
Mr. Manager, did you have a comment?
Well, I suggest maybe the motion state bringing it back in 90 or to January, excuse me, February 15th unless it has to return to the Planning Commission for further review. No?
No, because if, if they've crossed the threshold of making something totally different than what has been approved by the Planning Commission, then it becomes a new application.
Okay.
Okay, and my concern was I don't want something major to happen and the citizens lose their ability to weigh in on that option at the Planning Commission before it gets to us. So it's a way to slow it down, get your input on whatever new proposal is, maybe as objectionable as the original one was. So our citizens need to have the opportunity to comment if it's a major change. So that was my concern and I would just like the Planning Department to keep that in mind, that, that would be at least preferred from my standpoint, that it does go back to planning if it's significant. Okay, so we got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda as presented with the amendment to defer public hearing item number 16 to February 15th of 2023. Any further discussion? If not, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We'll now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
We have one agenda speaker this evening, Thomas Rhine, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, representing self regarding item 19, staff report regarding city truck route survey and item 21, a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on December 7th, 2022, to receive public comment on the restriction of trucks on Shoulders Hill Road from Bridge Road to Pewsville Road, the restriction of trucks on Duchess Way, the restriction of trucks on Baron Boulevard and the restriction of trucks on Suffolk Meadows Boulevard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff Chief, and the citizens of Suffolk. My name is Tom Rhine. I live at 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard in Suffolk. I personally want to thank all of you for your consideration as to the need for a full review of the current truck traffic route strategy at tonight's meeting and also for scheduling a public hearing on December 7th, 2022 regarding the impact of these trucks are having on the safety, health, and quality of life of our communities. I sat in this exact chamber yesterday afternoon for almost three hours in an effort to request additional time to review CUP 2022-022, a proposal for what appeared to be a ubiquitous tractor-trailer parking lot in the North Gate Commerce Park for approximately 100 tractor-trailers. All I was requesting was time because I had only been provided a matter of days and in most cases with this information, hours, to review hundreds of pages of technical information regarding this project while the developer and tenant had months, if not years, to prepare it. I discussed with Planning Commission at length my documented concerns regarding the impact of the tractor-trailers that are having on our communities all across Suffolk. In the end, I was denied my sole request for more time. I wasn't looking to ask them to deny the application. I was just asking for more time to review the information appropriately so I could make an informed decision on how I felt about it. That was all I was asking for. The Planning Commission voted seven to zero against providing me the same opportunity that the applicant had with the chairman stating at the end, we're talking about everything external to the Commerce Park here. We need to focus on what's internal to this Commerce Park, i.e. the parking lot. At the same time, none of us knew how prolific his words would be because at that exact hour yesterday, the entire city of Suffolk became one big parking lot. Due to one tractor-trailer accident on Route 58, the entire roadway system in Suffolk came to a complete halt, not only inconveniencing thousands of Suffolk citizens for hours, but creating a train chain reaction for multiple additional traffic accidents across the entire city and putting countless others at risk from the Chesapeake City Line to the North Carolina border. In closing, I ask that all of you take this review very seriously, tonight's review on the tractor-trailer traffic route strategy, with open minds and open hearts for the citizens of Suffolk. Give all of us the time to review the information and to stop making these types of decisions constantly that impact thousands of citizens of Suffolk in a vacuum. What happens in a parking lot in the North Gate Commerce Park does have a significant impact on all the citizens of Suffolk regardless of where we live. Thank you.
That concludes the agenda speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to presentation of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles, animal-friendly license plate program for animal shelter services. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a justice assistance grant from the United States Department of Justice in support of the Suffolk Police Department. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the United States Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services in the support of the Suffolk Police Department. Item number 10, an ordinance amending City Code Section 2-61 concerning city council meeting time. And item number 11, an ordinance amending City Code Section 2-96 concerning deadline for registering as a non-agenda speaker.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item seven, the city has received funds in the amount of $1,485 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Program. The received funds will support the Suffolk Animal Control Sterilization Program. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $1,485. There was no local match. In regards to item eight, the city has received a justice assistance grant in the amount of $39,482 from the United States Department of Justice in support of the Suffolk Police Department crime prevention activities, inclusive of the purchase of external hard drives, cellphone data extraction software, active shooter steel plate kits, employee background investigative assistance and training for sworn personnel. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $39,482. Again, no local match. In regards to item nine, the city has received funds in the amount of $3,492,000 from the United States Department of Justice Office of Community Policing Services. Funding will be used to replace the outdated Communication Center computed aided dispatching system and the police records management system. And as you may recall, this was part of our community projects application in 2021, which we were successful with. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of capital projects fund budget by $3,492,000. No local matches required. In regards to item 10, as you may recall, we, you have adopted a previous resolution or ordinance on your time, but tonight's ordinance really is amending City Code Section 261 concerning city council's meeting start time. The code revision changes the meeting start date from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. In regards to item 11, it is an ordinance amending City Code Section 2-96 concerning deadline for registering as a non-agenda speaker. The code revisions changes the deadline from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM to correlate with the meeting start time. Now, again, previous resolutions were adopted shortly, I guess, around the pandemic time on these. And that's my comment, sir.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions about the items, the motion is in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Approve as presented, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Ward?
Second.
A second from Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements either by agreement or condemnation for the Pittman Town Road Route 668 over Mill Swamp Bridge replacement. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works will provide the overview. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, this is a good news story in front of you all. Maybe it'll be a good news story if our slides come up. There we go. This is another one of our bridges that we have in the city that has a weight restriction on it and is a little bit antiquated and an opportunity through the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program to replace that bridge. This is Pittman Town Road over Mill Swamp. Again, the purpose is to take a bridge that is underrated. It is on one of our minor roadways on, on Pittman Town Road and I'll go back to exactly where this is in just a few moments, but this bridge was built in 1950. It's now posted for seven tons and 10 tons. Again, we used to have a single digit, then we went to two digits and actually, as we go forward in our program now, it's usually like four digits on those bridges because again, it's based on the axle configuration and each, the more axles you add on the vehicle, the more vehicle, the weight the vehicle can carry and still put the same pressure on the bridges. Again, this is a steel truss, approximately 45 feet and will be replaced in its entirety. It is now considered structurally deficient. The timeline on this, with council's approval tonight, we will begin right-of-way acquisition next month in December. We anticipate about 11 months to do this and actually, the right-of-way acquisition on this is generally very, very minor and mostly easements to, to accomplish the construction. We'd advertise it in the spring of 2024. the construction. We'd advertise it in the spring of 2024 with construction starting as soon as we can get through the process with VDOT and get all the approvals. And it would take us approximately one year to replace this bridge, similar to many of the other smaller bridges we've done recently. Preliminary engineering on this is estimated about $139,000. Again, only $15,000 in right-of-way, as I noted, pretty small insignificant impact. Construction is about $1.3 million, so our total budget is $1.4 million, again, funded through the Department of Transportation. As I noted, this is actually as south and west in the city of Suffolk as you can get and be on a public road in the city of Suffolk. You cannot actually get to this road from Virginia. You have to dip into North Carolina, come back into Virginia for this small piece of Pittman Town, and to leave it, you go back into North Carolina. It's kind of a unique roadway. It kind of zigzags back and forth across the Commonwealth. There's actually two residents out there and a bunch of farmland and a bunch of animals. So again, it's a great place. But again, it is an important piece of infrastructure in our city because there are some agricultural products that move through that area. Again, you can see where it is. It's a very small bridge, very needing of repair. And at the conclusion of the public hearing tonight, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I do want to share with you just a couple of facts that I mentioned. This is a good news story. So currently in the city of Suffolk inventory, we have 147 structures that are classified as bridges. Of those, currently, there are 11 structures that have some type of restriction on them for weight, including this one we're about to talk about and have public hearing on. There are seven structures out of that 11 that are currently under design and/or construction. So within about three years, we will be down to, if my math is right, four structures in our city that have any type of restrictions on. We have been very, very fortunate with the Department of Transportation to remove these deficient structures from our inventory. So again, I think that actually works out a little over 2% of our structures. I would challenge, it's probably not another locality in the state that's any better shape than we are as far as structurally deficient bridges. And again, I look forward to any questions you may have at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Ignorance is presented for council's consideration. The motion will be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from OI, Office Industrial Zoning District, to B2, General Commercial Zoning District, conditional for property located at 3075 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 25, parcel 29M, account number 253269600. This is RZN 2022-11, conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item 13 and item 14 are going to be companion items. Of course, there is two separate votes on these. But the Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the overview. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As Al said, this is a rezoning that is a companion piece with a conditional use permit. It's custom in the past. We've done this under one presentation. They still require two votes, obviously, two separate public hearings. But for the sake of brevity, I'll be presenting them together. This is a rezoning that would pave the way for a conditional use permit. So this is a conditional rezoning request to rezone a five-acre parcel. This is tax map 25*29M on Godwin Boulevard from OI to B2. Like I said, the application is accompanied by concurrent rezoning request for a conditional use permit that would establish a mini warehouse on the property, which is a self-service storage facility. And that conditional use permit is contingent upon the approval of the requested rezoning. The portion of the property is subject to the CUP application, consists of undeveloped land behind the existing credit union at 3075 Godwin Boulevard. And the subject parcel is located in the central growth area and designated suburban use district. So the subject parcel, like I said, it's 25*29M, is currently zoned OI, Office Institutional District. The parcel surrounds an adjoining out parcel, parcel 25*29M*1, which is recognized as 3085 Godwin Boulevard, which was created by a previous subdivision plat. The property to the north is the planter station subdivision that's currently zoned PD. That's planned development. To the west, we have the King's Landing Town Home zoned PD. And to the south is the Gallery at Godwin Mixed Use Development. This is a multi-story development, mixed-use development containing apartments above retail. And this is currently under construction. That's on the former old Lowe's site. That property is zoned B2. To the east across Godwin Boulevard, medical offices, those are also zoned B2. So the configuration of existing and future uses of the parcel in relation to Godwin Boulevard and surrounding development shown here in this aerial, the gallery at Godwin is being constructed on an adjacent parcel to the south that's left on this image. And the planter station subdivision is being constructed currently on the adjacent parcel to the north. It's the right of the image. The subject property is currently served by two entrances, a primary entrance to Godwin Boulevard and a secondary entrance, which will allow cross-access through the gallery at Godwin, which is being built. The property and all the properties to the north, to the bypass fronting on the west side of Godwin, are zoned B2. Dental and medical offices are planned for the out parcel. That's the 29M*1 property that's going to front on Godwin Boulevard, and they'll remain the OI district. Here in this slide, you can see these, on the left-hand side, the conceptual layout of the gallery at Godwin that's adjacent to it. And then you can see that same vantage point as it's under construction. But the image on your bottom left is the site behind that Bronco Credit Union is where this proposed mini warehouse facility will be. So the purpose of this exhibit shows the boundary, the extent of the property. This exhibit in conceptual plan on the next slide show the configuration of the proposed mini warehouse building relative to the existing credit union and the plan for the dental and medical offices on the adjoining parcel. You can also see the stormwater pond that will serve the site on the northern boundary existing. So mini warehouse uses are subject to supplemental use regulations established in Section 31709 of the UDO. In a lot of ways, these are conditions that must be met if these are constructed in the city within a set of circumstances. So one of those regulations restricts the overall length of the building to no more than 200 feet in length at any portion. And the proposed building was designed to comply with that as well as with the other standards in mind. The subject parcel, as part of this request, received a conditional use permit back in 2004 for the existing drive-through for Bronco Credit Union. The entire site shown on the conceptual plan, both parcels, was zoned CP prior to being rezoned OI back in 2004. Like I said, the out parcel, that's going to be the Gualtoni Dental Office that received site plan approval back in 2021. And a significant extent of the property is encumbered by an ingress egress utility and drainage easements, including stormwater impoundment and maintenance easements for the three and a half, I'm sorry, three-quarter of an acre stormwater, three-quarter of an acre stormwater pond that's serving the bank. So here we have some renderings of conceptual elevation examples provided to us by the applicant. As I stated, there are some supplemental use standards that we have in our UDO for these mini warehouse storage units that really allow for a pretty aesthetically pleasing design of these structures because, obviously, we have concerns with placement of garage doors, exterior storage, things of that nature. So this conceptual elevation demonstrates consistency with those architectural requirements for mini warehouse accessible from the interior hallways. And compliance with these standards will be reviewed and administered upon the review of the site plan associated with it. We do have a proffer associated with this rezoning, one proffer. And there are a variety of uses that are permitted by a matter of right in our B2 zoning district. The sole proffer here states that B2 use shall be limited to the current bank use, other office uses, and mini warehouse use, as they're proposing. So staff's evaluated both of these applications against the requirements in the Unified Development Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan, particularly with this area being along Godwin Boulevard. We see no issue with the proposed rezoning to B2 as there's a variety of B2 existing along that corridor. Additionally, the supplemental use standards as it relates to the conditional use permit are going to result in a pretty attractive development there as well, and we are recommending approval of the CUP. Lastly, the Planning Commission at their meeting of October 18, 2022, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request, RZN 2022-011. And the Planning Commission at their meeting October 18, 2022, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of CUP 2022-019 with the conditions noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'll be happy to address any concerns or questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wayne. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And this is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. Thank you so much for your service to our city. My name is Melissa Venable. My office address is 5857 Harbor View Boulevard in Suffolk, Virginia. I want to thank staff. As always, they've been diligent in working with me to get the best plan we could bring forward to you this evening. And it's always a pleasure to work with Kevin. He's very helpful, as well as Mr. Bateman, who's fairly new to the staff, and I really have enjoyed working with him. I'm sure you're aware of all the development that's gone on around this particular site, the Port 58, the medical office, gallery at Godwin that's going up currently, planter station development, and hopefully public sooner than later, which brings me to the idea that I think this is a really great use in the middle of all that. That would help serve the residence and the commercial that's coming about with interconnectivity so we have less crossover traffic and hopefully less traffic that has to go out onto Godwin Boulevard. But this is a service that is needed, and I think it'll provide to be very beneficial to the community there. The property, as you've seen, Bronco Bank is currently underutilized. It's about five acres, and only about half of the site is being used currently. The utilities, access, and stormwater are all in place for the addition of growth on that site. We believe that the requested use for conditioned storage building, I hate that we have to use the term mini warehouse because I think we have the wrong picture when we see that. And I'm glad that Kevin was able to put up the pictures that we had provided. It looks more like an office building, if you may, but it's what we call a conditioned storage building. I think it's a good transition use in this particular area. We'll have a 30-foot scot set back to the rear of the property that will help buffer the existing community that's there. The building will appear more like an office, as I just mentioned. The storage facility and the design restrictions that are part of the ordinance will give us architectural standards and guidelines that we'll have to adhere to, which will create a very nice-looking building. We are hoping that this building will be able to move forward fairly quickly. Because of the utilities and the stormwater are in place, we're hoping that in early 2023, you'll see us with ENS plans approved. And by the summer, we're hoping that we'll be able to move forward with the project, and you'll see the construction coming out of the ground. I will stand by if you have additional questions. I forgot to mention at the beginning, I am representing Bronco Bank, as well as Mr. Wright and Mr. Smith, who are both here to also answer additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? If not, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mayor, council people. My name is Rob Barrett. I work for Cathcart Group. We're the owner of the gallery at Godwin. We provided, I think, Kevin, a letter of opposition to this, but I wanted to bring it here tonight. Our primary issue with the development is that they've got their secondary access coming through our property. And as of right now, they really have no legal right to go through there. They've stated that the site plan shows connectivity, but there is no access easement in place. And we're concerned with the amount of traffic that this project would bring through our site and through a residential neighborhood. And that's our primary objection to this project.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. What do I do with this letter? Okay. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period. If the proponents, applicant would like to offer rebuttal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to, once we're done, ask Kevin. He may be able to explain it a little bit better. But one of the conditions of the rezoning is that there'll be signage, and I don't have it right in front of me, so I apologize for that, but we will have signage that will bring traffic through the main access off of Godwin Boulevard, and truck traffic will be limited. We're asking that no truck traffic will go through the interconnectivity with the Cathcart site and the Bronco Bank site. So it would be used for regular traffic, but it's being restricted for large truck traffic. And again, he'll be able to explain that a little better because I wasn't expecting that. And we had talked about this at planning, and I thought it was resolved. We did the site plan work for Cathcart. Their plans do show, well, it wasn't for Cathcart. It was for the owner at that time, or the developer at the time they've since sold the property. But it is, their plans show a connection through the property. So what I was told from staff was that we didn't need an easement because Bronco Bank puts a, has a stub right to the Cathcart property, and then Cathcart's plans show connection right to it. So with our presentation and what we agree to with our package that's before you tonight is that we would limit our truck traffic going through the site and, again, directing all of our traffic to come through Godwin Boulevard, the main ingress egress from Godwin. I hope that helps, and I'm sure Kevin can help clarify. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? We have three minutes and 30 seconds. Now, this is for the rebuttal, sir. I'm sorry. Unless you weren't, yeah, I don't want you speaking against yourself. Sorry about that. This is for rebuttal to the opposition. Okay. Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an order has been presented for consideration, and the motion will be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Can I get Kevin up for a minute? He knew I was going to call him. Just knew it. That last little thing that came up about the stub out going through that property, elaborate.
Yes, sir. So I do want to point you all to a condition that we have placed or recommended for approval as it relates to the conditional use permit. And that would be, pardon me, let me get there. Condition number two, which states that the applicant shall install signage subject to all zoning regulations and permit requirements applicable thereto as determined by our zoning administrator as necessary to direct moving vans and trucks to utilize the commercial entrance on Godwin Boulevard to access the site and limit usage of the inner parcel connection. So there is an inner parcel connection and may have an aerial. You can kind of see it on this layout here. It's, let's see if I can use the pen. kind of see it on this layout here. It's, let's see if I can use the pen. It's in that area. So the Gallery at Godwin stubs out at that point. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, no, that's a turnaround. Be here? That's where the bank is. Please, come, oh, no, right here. So I got it right on the third time.
We got three circles here.
Let me, I'll delete that. I'll delete that. So this point right here. Sorry, it's hard to see with the green overlay. But that's where that stub out would be. Gallery at Godwin is a part of their site plan approval, subs out to this portion of the property as well. It's a UDO requirement, particularly when you're along an arterial, to allow for traffic to not get on the arterial and go in between uses.
So with this particular structure, and I listened to the Planning Commission hearing as well, there was some real detailed discussion about the signage that was going to keep, hopefully, there's no guarantees, make it a little more difficult for this traffic to go through into that property as well as it's kind of tight for them to be able maneuver, from what I understand, to make any trucks to get in through that area very well to begin with. Can you elaborate on that? On the, what are you gonna do to help keep that traffic from going through there? Signage, some of these that may not have heard this, need to hear it.
Yeah, absolutely. So signage will be placed, but by and large, folks going to the site will be utilizing that main commercial entrance off of Godwin, 100%. And I think, to elaborate on that even further, these mini warehouse storage units, facilities, are really minuscule drivers of traffic. They create almost no traffic. People bring their things in, they store them there, they leave them there. They're not generators of traffic.
So you, I mean, everybody kind of feels like this is not going to produce a lot of traffic through that property, basically, as it gets right down to it.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Because it's either in or out to store your stuff and goodbye, move on, whatever. So I just, I want to know for sure that you feel that what the gentleman's complaint was that came up earlier can almost assure us that that traffic is not going to impinge upon his, being the right of way to go through to his property to do what they gotta do? To get to the mini warehouse or out, whichever comes first, whichever?
Yeah. I think by and large, you can't guarantee anything particularly when there's a connection. But by and large, folks GPSing this, it'll take them to that main commercial
But it's a legal stub out.
It's a legal stub out that's required by the UDO.
Okay. I got you. All right.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
I was gonna make a motion too, and then, Mayor, before I concluded.
Oh, you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yep.
Okay. We'll get to you in a second. Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Fawcett.
Yes, I wanted to conclude with making a motion to approve RZN 2022-11. And also tie it to 18 if we have to, but I think we have to do a separate motion on that, right?
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Is there a second at this time, or questions, or comments? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wine, would you come back up, please? Thank you. I'm having a hard time seeing why we have to have that, and you say it's part of the UDO and you have to have it. And you're gonna put signs up and that, and that's gonna supposedly influence people not to, not to use it. I just, I'm having a hard time with that. Maybe there's a flaw somewhere in that UDO. I don't know. By having that going into the property, you have the entrance coming off Godwin. Is this a safety issue? Is this part of the safety issue? What is, what's the reason?
Primarily a safety issue, and Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, can speak more to that. But the intent of that provision from the UDO is to encourage internal circulation of commercial sites, to not create a situation where they have to unnecessarily go back onto a major arterial. So, for instance, if someone is using the bank that, or someone lives in the Gallery at Godwin and wants to use the bank, they're not having to go onto Godwin Boulevard to get there, because the bank was also on that site.
So the bank is gonna use that also?
It's on the same parcel. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Williams?
Yes, sir. My question is, if the throughway, if it's gonna be used for multiple businesses, that means it's gonna be more wear and tear on the parking lots, who's responsible for that? You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, understood.
So if the storage facility is gonna be using the other property, and let's say it creates, it's gonna create more traffic, and it causes that particular area to wear and tear much faster because there's more traffic, who's responsible for the repair of that parking area or that through fail?
That would be the owner of the property.
Even if there's more traffic being generated because of that through fail. I guess, it kind of makes sense what Mr. Goldberg is saying. The UDO do have some flaws. Why can't they regress and egress through Godwin Boulevard and not have that problem with, you know, traffic going through their parking lot around their buildings, which they're responsible for? Now they have traffic from other businesses. That doesn't seem fair to me.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment?
Yes, if I could ask Chief Baraki to come to the mic, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
From a fire safety aspect and your access to facilities, how's that relate to this secondary access?
Yes, sir. So with any property that meets a certain height and width and accessibility for fire apparatus, has to be two entrances. Not knowing this applicant or application very well, I'm guessing three stories. Is it three stories, so 30 feet or greater, then there has to be two access points. If that main access point is cut off, it doesn't matter what, for me, the applicant is irrelevant. Two access points for fire apparatus is required. Is that good, Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want me to go first? Okay. Mr. Wine, can I ask, ask you a question? I'm somewhat familiar with what the chief alluded to in that you need to have access for emergency vehicles. I personally was involved in a piece of property that didn't lend itself to have that second access. This is before I was on city council, so anybody getting ideas. And in lieu of having a permanent, it was more, there's an emergency ingress egress. It's not used on a regular basis, but it is there, and safety personnel know where it is, but it's not used on a regular basis. Now, is there some way that that access could be limited to emergency vehicles only, so that would preclude any of that traffic coming through there, but it would still be available for emergency apparatus? Is that something that can be worked into the process?
Potentially. Right now, the section in play, we have street improvement standards. It's part of our performance standards in the UDO that speak to this joint access for adjacent commercial uses that are on major arterials. Whether we would be comfortable having this as an emergency-only access, I'm unsure. I think that's probably more appropriate for Robert to address.
Mr. Lewis, if I could get you up and ask you. So I guess the question is, does this project fly without that entrance being used for the business end of it, traffic flow, since warehouses require very little traffic, but can we satisfy that emergency access if it's emergency vehicles only or something of that nature?
Well, again, I think the chief has spoken to that, but what I also want to note in this is if you recognize the entrance that we're talking about on the residential property, that's the traffic signal. So again, that gives us much better access in and out of the highway for the users. And again, you've got a residential use that's generating traffic here, and you've got a commercial use that's much, much lower. So as we talk about the impact of maintenance on that, the one group is gonna cause much less impact than the other group. Again, I, we have strived for many years to talk about how do we maintain our arterials, and one of the ways we keep our arterials viable without having to just make them six lanes, eight lane, 10 lanes wide, is we put this interoperability between them. So again, folks that need to just go one or two properties down, do not have to go out on the highway, don't have to make U-turns, don't have to interact with everybody else. They can go property to property as they need to. Again, I would highly recommend that we not preclude this opportunity to make that interoperability in there. And again, I defer to the chief on the safety issue.
Counselperson Butler Barlow.
I just have a question. Isn't it, isn't there a high possibility that the folks that are gonna live in this new apartment complex are also gonna use the bank and the mini storage, and that that would give them a really convenient access without having to get out on Godwin, and isn't that why we have that? I mean, it just seems like that would be a natural business transaction between those residents and that, and those two businesses. Just, just a comment.
Councilman Fawcett.
This, my observation is you have a bank in there as well as the community, and the bank is probably the main focal point here. The more people are gonna use the bank than they are the storage facility versus the community they live in. And I would prefer that the way this is constructed, that I would have that opportunity to come out of my community and go over to my bank versus, or coming out of my community, going to the storage facility versus having to go out onto Godwin, which is a high-speed highway, and come back around in to get into a facility. Doesn't make sense. I think that was probably the purpose of this to begin with, but I just wanted to make that comment. I absolutely think this is gonna, we're overblowing this thing, and it's gonna be all right, that people are gonna use the bank, the community versus the storage facility is just gonna, it's not gonna generate that kind of, I have one in my neighborhood right now that I hardly even know that people are coming and going from it, because it's frequently on different times, they have security entrance ways they have to go through, and so on and so forth. So I just really think this is a good project, and I have no problem moving forward with it.
Councilman Goldberg?
Mayor, we have, we have a motion. I was just gonna second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval from Councilman Fawcett and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children.
Mayor?
Did I miss one?
I'll get back to the conditional use permit.
Oh, my bad. Oh, yeah. We got two warehouses. Okay, number 14. Trying to get out of here on time, folks. Okay, an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a mini warehouse on property located on 13075 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 25, parcel 29M, account number 253269600, is CUP 202219. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Kevin Wine will write it back down on this item also.
From a planning perspective, I've kind of outlined the, this issue in my previous presentations. I really have nothing further to add, other than to say that this would, the rezoning being approved would pave the way for them to receive a conditional use permit for the mini warehouse use on the property. We do have our supplemental use regulations in place that would control the design and aesthetics of the building. Staff's recommending approval, and the Planning Commission at their meeting last month also unanimously recommends approval. That concludes my comments on this. I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? As to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions, 5857 Harborview Boulevard. I will stand by for questions, but did want to note that in the 16 years, eight now, gosh, 20 years that I've been in Suffolk, every site that we've worked on where we have the ability to do interconnectivity, we've done it, and it's worked out pretty well, whether it's private sites or public sites where the Panera and the Moes sit today. I remember working on that a long time ago. Imagine if both of those sites sit separately, you had to go out onto Godwin and come back in. I think the ordinance in this case does work pretty well. The connection currently actually sits there today on the Bronco Bank site, and like I said, the site design that was approved for Gallery at Godwin also is designed for this connection to be made. So I don't mean to beat a dead horse. I just, I just want to make sure that, and like I said, working with the ordinance for the last 20 years, it's, this is the first time it's come up as being a negative. Typically, it's always been a real positive type of thing where we have connections between sites. Harborview Boulevard, again, is a perfect example. If you look at all the new retail that's been built, and the Bonds Core site, and the medical office buildings, they all have to interconnect, all those streets come together, whether it's through parking lots or streetways. It helps from getting cars back and, you know, going out to Harborview, coming back in, going back out. So it, like I said, for 20 years, it seems to have worked fairly well in the city, and I just, I'll stand by for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
Hello. Again, my name's Rob Barrett, and I've heard some of the comments that they've made about the traffic pattern, but one of the things that I'm not sure you can see from this is there's a main light going from Godwin into our property. And if you look at the traffic pattern, I'm doubtful that anybody's gonna use anything other than our property to go to their storage, because they'd have to go all the way down Godwin, make a U-turn, and come back in. So these, this whole plan is predicated on two entrances, and they're really making our property the main entrance going in. We're gonna have trucks going through there, and I still don't understand what legal right they have to come through. There may be a stub on a site plan, but there is no access easement granted by us or any intention for us to do so, because we don't want traffic through. They've not offered to, to this gentleman's point over here, they've not offered anything to help with any maintenance that the traffic that they're gonna create coming through our property. They've not really talked to us about it at all. They didn't even confer with us on this plan. We found out about it through this right here. And all we're asking is that they're contemplating going through our property with no legal right to do so, and all of the traffic is gonna end up going through Godwin. It's not gonna go all the way up and all the way turn around. I would be willing to bet all the Google traffic maps are gonna send it right through, because that's the closest way to get through. And that's what we're asking you guys to consider again. Our neighbor next door, Goodwill, has the little stub out, and they have an access easement that was granted by them or from us to them on the previous ownership, and it was contemplated. Somebody had a conversation, somebody talked about it, and they agreed to it. None of that's happened with the current developer. They're just assuming they're coming through the property, and signage is not gonna do it. I seriously doubt putting a sign up telling a truck driver that they can't use it, when that's the easiest way for them to get through, is gonna stop them from coming through our property. We're gonna have families, it's all residential, they're gonna be kids, there's gonna be already traffic from residents coming in there, and they're just gonna create more traffic more traffic for us, and they're not giving us anything in return as far as assurances that that's going to not be there, or any compensation for maintenance is going to have to be dealt with. We're going to be the ones dealing with the traffic from their business, and they're not. They don't have any, as I understand it, they're not going, this facility is not really have a lot of people in it, so it's really just going to be all of their clients coming through our property to go to their facility and leave it. Again, those are my comments, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period. Anyone like to avail themselves of that time?
Hello, counsel. My name's Phil Smith. I'm with Waverton. I live at 3021 North James Drive in Suffolk and Riverfront. I just wanted to clarify, when, prior to this, I did call and speak to somebody at the Cathcart Group, told them we wanted to be good neighbors. I don't remember if it was, I don't know if it was this gentleman or not, but I said, you know, our company's an apartment developer, we understand your concerns, and we'll address them any way we can. Gave them my contact information and said to call me, and that's when we started discussing the signage with the planning department. So I just wanted to clarify that. And also, the stub from Bronco Bank is already there, from that side. That was approved with their plans, so they already ran the stub to that property. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, sir. Have anyone else who would like to speak in rebuttal?
Sorry, my apologies. Melissa Venable. I think despite this conditional use permit, I believe the Bronco Bank stub is already in place, and like I said, the Cathcart plan shows the stub already in place. So even if this wasn't on the table, I believe, and I would ask Kevin, I believe that connectivity was still supposed to be made regardless of the conditional use permit or the rezoning that we're talking about today. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in rebuttal? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Need to have it come up, sir. You know, what was stated by the gentleman was, I understood, about the traffic coming in, the light coming through that property. How do you deal with that? How are we going to deal with that? If that's what happens? And I can see that happening.
The primary concern about, that our condition tries to address is truck traffic, so moving truck traffic utilizing the site. We can see where that would be potentially a nuisance that the property owners to the south would not want to incur. But from a planning standpoint, and I think the points that Ms. Venable made ring true. In our experience, interconnectivity between commercial sites is just good planning. That's why it's in the UDO. His residents very well may want access to the site, whether they're going to the dentist or going to the bank. So I think it really does benefit both parties, and I think that's the intent.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
Kevin, just a couple of questions. What was there first?
The first development on that site, well, previously you had the Lowe's South, that's where the Gallery at Godwin is being constructed. But then Bronco came in, I believe, 2005, 2006. Bronco Bank had a site plan approved back in 2004.
How long has the residential portion been there?
How long has the residential to the south been there? That is currently under construction.
So the intent of the UDO and the intent of this plat out there is typically, the way it's designed through the engineering process is to stub out these streets for potential development of some sort futuristic. Because virtually there was nothing there. Then you had the credit union, then you have the dentist, and so on and so forth. But that's the reason that they stubbed these out in most neighborhoods, in most areas where there's commercial, is to allow for additional facilities to be built that have an access way. So that coming through there is, isn't that a city street? Or was it a private street?
It's a private street internal to the site. Or not even a private street, just an internal access point.
So I'm mixing apples and oranges with Mr. Goldberg, is I just don't want to, as much as I want the project, and I approved it in the first part, to go through, I don't want to pound the residents of them neighborhoods with truck traffic. That's what we're dealing with out in Suffolk in the north end now.
Well, it's important to note, and I should elaborate, we can get stuck on the residences. There will be a significant amount of apartment units as part of the Gallery at Godwin. But the Gallery of Godwin itself is a mixed-use development with a significant portion of office and retail uses that will generate their own traffic, obviously.
I got you. Okay, let me hammer this in my head for a minute, and then I'll go from there.
Counselperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. So the intersection where the light is, I'm looking at the map, is Hill Point to the one side and into the new apartment multi-use complex on the other side, and that belongs to that property, but this is a major intersection with the light and other businesses. So there's not going to be any restriction on traffic into that development where the apartments and the other commercial properties are, right? There's no restriction on anybody coming in and out of there. It's not, I mean, even though it's on that property, there's not going to be a sign, "private entrance, nobody can come in here unless you're a resident." There's not going to be anything like that, right?
We wouldn't require anything like that.
Right, so this is going to be an intersection with the light that people are going to be able to flow freely, sorry, up and down Godwin, and in and out of Hill Point, across into the new apartment complex and so forth. So they're all, besides trying to divert the truck traffic to go into the main entrance at Bronco, that intersection can be used by anybody.
I think that goes back to the intent of that cross-access.
And the connectivity. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and interject some here. Kevin, while I've got you, if I understand this right, and then I'm going to defer to the city attorney in a minute, I'm going to give you a little time to, because when we mentioned legal rights to be able to do things, I mean, if people own property, you know, what right do they have to limit, you know, that traffic to what extent? You can answer that one in a second, because I've got another question first. I think I understand what the point of contention is, if the main entrance is on the Bronco property, which is past where the stoplight is, if you're coming from 460 and heading towards Chukka Dog, then you'd have to, I agree with the individual that had a problem with it, chances are, I mean, nobody's going to go past that stoplight and make a U-turn. Planner Station would be the earliest place you could make a U-turn, or you go down one more, you're at King's Fork Road. So I think it's a logical assumption that all the traffic heading in that direction is going to take a left at the stoplight. Coming up from the other direction, they'll probably use the main entrance. So I understand why there's some concern, but my main concern is we're talking about legal rights of doing whatever, and if you could, maybe Mr. City Attorney addressed that issue as it applies to this application.
No, Mayor, I cannot address that in this public forum. It would need to be an attorney-client confidential conversation, either through a memo or in closed session.
Okay. Okay, let me address my question to Mr. Wine then. In these circumstances, with your experience, if there are adjoining businesses in prior applications and what have you, what have you found to be the case if there's an issue with an adjoining property owner and access through their property? What has happened, what have you experienced in the past? If there have been?
There are a lot of layers to that. I'll say in general, this has not been an issue. It's whether there's an existing easement or not, it's not been an issue. But obviously, the cleanest way to ensure that one has access is through a legally-deeded cross-access easement.
Yeah, and I know, there's a lot of examples in the city where we've done that on multiple occasions. I don't know, like, the property owners where the new Arby's just went in, you get, and I think Ms. Venable's example is exactly right, where Moes and come out the stoplight, there's only one stoplight. So you have to go through a parking lot and around, but I don't know if this is the norm, but is it allowed by right, if you will, or do all the property owners need to agree on what access is being granted?
I'm probably not the best.
Maybe a legal question?
That's more a legal question. Like I said, my answer, I'll stand firm on is, obviously, it's cleaner with a cross-access easement. However, when something is stubbed out to the property line, at that point, it becomes a much more legal issue between property owners.
I mean, it just sounds like to me, and I'm just going to throw something out there, because I don't do motions and seconding, but under the circumstances, I don't see where it'd be unreasonable to table this for 30 days. It doesn't seem like they've gotten together or not, you know, as far as agreement, and there doesn't seem to be a decision as to whether this legally, if there's a legal point of contention as to access, and I mean, if I guess it doesn't come up now, it'll come up later, but it's, with those two things right there and the discussion, and I've been able to get a definitive answer from either you or the city attorney right now, as much as I like the project, I think it's, I mean, I think it's a great project, it's in the right place, it's going to serve a purpose, we've got apartments going everywhere, and apartments never have any storage space, it's very limited. So I like the project, I like the scope of the project, I like how it looks, I like everything about it. But at the same time, I mean, we need to ensure that everybody's rights are protected, and everybody has a say over what happens with their property, and we're doing the right thing by all the property owners. So, I mean, I would just throw it out there that, you know, maybe tabling it for 30 days wouldn't be a bad idea. Councilman Fawcett.
I kind of agree with you, Mayor. I like what you're saying. I think that for the sake of the whole application, I think it would probably be best, I don't know if 30 is enough for the applicant to be able to talk with the owners out there to hash this out. Ms. Venable, do you feel like 30 days is acceptable? I'd like to make a motion, but I want to be fair to all parties in this. Is 30 days amicable to you to, because we're going to table this regardless, I just want to know how many days you think you might need to draw this?
I understand what you're asking. I will have to get in touch with Bronco Bank, they're not here this evening, and ask them the question. But in counter to that, I do believe that it's already set up to connect, whether we're looking at this conditional use permit or not, it's already set up as a connection point. So once the property to the south of us is fully built out, the connection is to be made, just like their property connects into the Goodwill site. So we're going to have a chain reaction here, frankly, if the engineering plans are approved, they signed off on the engineering plans that were approved, that say these two pieces connect and come together. So we're questioning that now, but we've never questioned it in all the other projects that we've worked on. If this conditional use permit wasn't in front of you today, then the bank and the site south of us would be connecting, period. It's just the way it was designed to be. So we're bringing it up based on a conditional use permit that's a secondary use, that generates a whole lot less traffic than the bank is going to generate, or that the multifamily will generate coming to the dentist's office when it's built, or the bank office. So I appreciate what you're saying. I don't know how long it's going to take for the bank to discuss this, or for us to get an answer from the attorney's office. I think that's the bigger question, is do we need to have an easement, or because the plans were approved and signed off on by all parties, is it a connection that can be made, period, the end, without an easement?
Well, I don't know, because the planning director made, just made the assertion that we should work toward having a clean easement in order to go through there.
But then are we going to have to get an easement from the site, the south of us, to Godwin? And then are we going to have to get an easement from Panera to Moes? I mean, it...
I mean, and I understand exactly what you're saying. You know, if this is allowed, because those things are done, if somebody says, okay, when a piece of property is stubbed out and we have access and whatever, there's nothing to talk about.
And everybody agreed and signed off on it when they purchased it or designed it or developed it.
Yeah, whether everybody agrees to it or not is irrelevant, because the engineering's done, it's stubbed out, and it's allowed. And that's all I'm looking for. You know, I'm good with that, but I'm not, we're not getting an answer.
So I guess my real question is, the 30 days to me is, will we be able to get an answer within the 30 days to be able to move forward? Now, if an easement isn't required. If an easement is required, then both parties have to come together and agree, and I don't know if that can be done in 30 days.
My point is, I don't see why we can't, because the only thing I'm looking for is a legal opinion.
Right.
That, based on the circumstances, the engineering does, it's stubbed out, it's signed off on, whether this party is not happy with the decision, it doesn't matter. So once we have that determined one time, if it ever comes up again, we know what to do. But to be honest with you, I haven't had it come up before.
No.
That I can remember, and the only thing that I am asking for is to ensure that what we are doing is legal and proper, and we have not violated anyone's rights to have opposition to, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. And if that's the case, I mean, and I'm sure this is something that the attorney will get back to us in about a few days, and then that's the end of it.
Let's go ahead and make, I'm going to make a motion that we table this for 30 days, Melissa, give you all a chance to get this thing ironed out and give everybody the opportunity so we got a clean sailing here. So my motion is to continue this particular conditional use permit for 30 days.
I believe you made a motion to approve it originally, so you're going to have to withdraw that motion.
I haven't made any on this.
No, nobody made a motion?
Not on this one. Well, the big first one I did.
It was a long time ago, I forgot.
Yeah, this one, they haven't done anything.
Okay, this is the first motion. Okay, so Councilman Fawcett is making a motion to table for 30 days. Councilman Williams?
I second that.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion?
Clarifying, it needs to be date-specific. So that would be the second meeting in December?
Correct.
So that would be December 21st.
December 21st. Okay, we've got a motion to table to December 21st from Councilman Fawcett, seconded by Councilman Williams. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to one, with Councilmember Butler Barlow voting in opposition.
Okay, I'll make sure I'm in the right place. Now, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children, on property located at 1013 Raven Hill Road, zoning map 26L, parcel 174, account number 306003105. This is CUP 202221. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, Interprettor of Planning and Community Development will provide this presentation also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Members of council, this is a CUP to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children on property located at 1013 Raven Hill Road. The property is located within the suburban, our central growth area, and is further identified as being in the inner-ring suburban use district. The subject property and all surrounding properties are zoned RLM, residential low-medium zoning district. The property is located in the Greystone Reserve neighborhood. The applicant's requesting to establish a daycare, this is a family day home, five to 12 children in their single-family home, in ages from six weeks to five years of age, with the hours of operation of 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The applicant stated that the downstairs area of the home, including the kitchen, dining room, living room, and one-half bathroom, and the finished double- room, living room, and one-half bathroom, and the finished double-car garage, will be used for the business, with the exception of one bedroom that is currently being used as an office. There are supplemental use standards, like many warehouse uses for family day homes, and one of the more important ones is there's a certain amount of square footage per child that needs to be maintained in the home. In total, 1,780 square feet of their 3,400 square-foot home will be utilized for the proposed daycare, that is certainly adequate for up to 12 children. The applicant has stated that the garage has been converted into livable space with a room that contains furnishings and toys needed for children, as you can see here. The applicant is providing four off-street parking spaces in addition to street parking, which is available, and the proposed use will have two employees, including the applicant and her husband. Currently, the property features a fenced-in outdoor play area, approximately 3,600 square feet, and located in the backyard. Use of the play area will not extend beyond the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the provided space exceeds the 1,000-square-foot minimum outdoor play area required by our supplemental use standards. Lastly, a conditional use permit recognizes that uses, because their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right, rather such uses are permitted through approval of a conditional use permit when those right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable, and those are all outlined in staff's report. So, staff has looked at this application as it relates to the Unified Development Ordinance and the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and recommends approval of this conditional use permit. Lastly, the Planning Commission at their meeting October 18th voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, well, the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address. That's to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone present to speak in favor? If not, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing those speakers, this public hearing is now closed, and an ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
I just have a question, but there's nobody here to ask. Is this, I see the hours of operation, but is this a seven-day-a-week operation, five-day-a-week operation, or really, does it matter? That was just my only comment.
You're up, Kevin.
I didn't see it, in case I blew through it and didn't see it in here.
We've been given no indication that they would be open during weekend hours for this use. My understanding would be a Monday-to-Friday operation.
Okay. In the future, I'd like to see it indicated, whether it's going to be a Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's not in here, and I think it'd be, public needs to know as well as we need to know.
Certainly, certainly noted, and particularly with this, these types of users, they're kind of gravitating and offering different services, so that's a great point.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
I move for approval.
A motion for approval for Councilman Williams, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward, is there any further, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing is item number 16, which has been deferred to February 15, 2023, at the request of the applicant. So, we will now move to ordinances, and we have none, we have no resolutions this evening. We do have a staff report in regards to city truck route strategy. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Hughes, Deputy City Manager, will provide the overview on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, just if you'd bear with me one minute while the slides get brought up on the screen. Thank you. So, as was alluded to, I wanted to share with you some information regarding how we're focusing our strategies related to trucks, and where they should be and where they shouldn't be. As you're aware, through different phone calls you've received through many years, we deal with trucks and where they should be and where they shouldn't be throughout the city. Obviously, as the world is changing very rapidly, convenience is king, we're seeing more trucks getting into different locations, near residential areas, the Port of Virginia is seeing record volumes, we are seeing new facilities come into the city of Suffolk, those all have a collection to where we need to put a greater focus and revise our strategy related to how trucks are interacting with our roads, with our businesses, and then hopefully keep them away from our citizens and where they reside. So, what that strategy really focuses on is really more than one thing. You know, I think it's important to note that any significant challenge is never one thing. This is one of those instances, and so what I want to talk to you about briefly is four strategies that we have in place, that we're shifting gears on, that we're introducing and creating some new approaches to. One that's going to include a number of our departments, and how we're all going to kind of take on this issue, to ensure that we have a good communication, that everybody's on the same page from a staff perspective, and that we can share that with our partners, the trucking industry, as well as some of our businesses. So, I'll hit on these four, signage, technology, communication and relationships, and then ordinances. So, first, I want to walk you through some updates that our traffic engineering department has been working on, and so, to the left, and I'll take you on a quick little tour around the city of Suffolk, we are here at the intersection of Pruden Boulevard and Pitchkettle, so, looking forward, you would go down Pitchkettle Road, and so, on the left-hand side is our previous trucks, no-truck sign. It's pretty tough to tell what that is, it's got a lot of narrative to it, the yellow sticks out, but by the time you come up on it, it's hard to really digest, even depending on whatever speed you're coming into. So, that was before. Where we are today is a much easier-to-interpret sign, a really dumbed-down version, and I mean that lovingly, to how to, we want to make sure that trucks are seeing this very early on, from a distance, into coming, into some of our areas around the city, and this will be something that you'll see through all these photos, that we're doing a uniform look, to make sure that folks can see it from a greater distance, but can also interpret it very quickly. And you can even see, as you kind of look at the two next to each other, the sign on the right is much easier to interpret than the left from about the same distance. So, working our way into downtown Suffolk, trucks in the downtown area have been something that we frequently deal with, especially with our peanut roasters and processors in and around the area. This is something, I've been here for 18 years, and I've been dealing with in my time here for 18 years. So, just real quickly, on the left-hand side, if I can get this, let me go back. So, on the left-hand side, as you're facing Constance, going past the McDonald's, right next to that red traffic signal, you may be able to make out it says "No Trucks" with a left and a right arrow. The new one in the same location has, again, that no-truck symbol next to that traffic signal, so we believe that's an improvement, that it's much more visible. Also, in the downtown area, heading, coming up through the Kimberly Bridge, heading into the historic area, on the left-hand side, next to the green traffic signal is your no-truck sign. On the right-hand side, we've added a new one, and off to the side, you can see, we even have one down at a little lower level, so you can catch two of those. I will notice on the left-hand side, down here at the bottom, as you're approaching that intersection, we've had for some time some no-truck signs approaching it, so you do get a number of different warnings as you're approaching that area. Most recently, obviously, Amazon and that fulfillment center has been part of topic, we know that those trucks have entered into some residential neighborhoods, we've seen them coming down Shoulders Hill Road, and I'll touch on what that strategy is and how we approach that as well, but we unfortunately installed or worked to have the ORF 2 and 3 signs put up here, heading south down Shoulders Hill Road, leading in that, that encourages that movement, those have been taken down, so we want to make sure that we remedy that situation. Also, going into Northgate Commerce Park, as trucks are exiting the park, we currently have these signs in place, I believe we have four throughout the park that are telling all trucks to take a right to head down 664, and we're continuing a few different sign strategies as well, to enforce some of that behavior, not just in Northgate, but also some other parts of the city. So, I just wanted to share with you some new signage approaches. Shifting into technology, this is one that's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of different routes. I have on here a map. What this map is, is by digging into a truck app that does GPS, this is one called Hammer, it's a free trucker routing system, just by way of example, this shows the Virginia International Gateway Terminal in Portsmouth, and if you were to put in, if I'm leaving VIG and I need to go to Northgate Commerce Park, how should I get there? You can see, we don't want this direction being produced, but unfortunately, it is, at least on this application. And so, this is sending trucks down the Western Freeway, 217, down Shoulders Hill. What we want them to do is go Western Freeway, 664, Portsmouth Boulevard, Nansman Parkway. It's a little quicker mileage to do that, but obviously, it's much more efficient, more effective, and that's where we want trucks to go. And so, looking into that, we're trying to see where they're drawing information from to come up with this solution. And so, what we're currently doing is scouring previous actions, some of those things include VDOT action, city council action, or anything in between. So, let me give you an example of some history, and I've got the note up here, in 2004, the city of Suffolk at the time, we did not control the roads, those had not been handed over from VDOT. The city council at the time asked VDOT to put in a truck restriction on Portsmouth Boulevard, Nansman Parkway, we could only control our section of Nansman Parkway. That was pre-improvement to Nansman Parkway, pre, really, Northgate taking off, I think we had one tenant in there, or maybe it was just under construction with Wonchi. So, again, I think this tells you that we've been dealing with this for quite some time, and obviously, the way that we're dealing with Nansman Parkway and the improvements have changed drastically. Here in 2004, we didn't even want them down Nansman Parkway, now, in 2022, we want you down Nansman Parkway, and obviously, for good reason, because the infrastructure is there. But, in interacting with VDOT, we dug in, asked the question, how do we undo what occurred? They're telling us in 2006, the CTP, Commonwealth Transportation Board, withdrew that action, and so, from their records, they're showing that they took action to remove that. However, we've done some digging on their website and some different searches, just even yesterday, while Robert Lewis and I were in the Planning Commission, we found a list on VDOT's website from 2007 that listed 337 and the restrictions, we've brought it to their attention, they told us they're going to be updating that list. So, essentially, what we need to do is scour as many sources on the internet, looking for these restrictions, that some of these GPSs are potentially picking up and reporting from. Not all GPS systems are sending you this way, if you did the same similar search for Waze or Google, they send you down Nansman Parkway, they send you down 664, because it's the fastest way, to be honest, and so, it's not a perfect system, it's going to take a lot of effort, it's one that we're up for the challenge, we want to figure this thing out, we know it's important to people's quality of life, we've invested heavily in these roads, that's where we want the trucks to go, and so, we're up for that challenge, we want to continue to be persistent and explore all these ins and outs to that. And so, just wanted to provide you with this real example, and the efforts that we're trying to put forth in order to combat it. Shifting to communication and relationships, so I'll give you an example, one that's very near to us. We are shifting, we'd like to request that when we have an industrial development, if they are to submit an engineering plan, site plan, conditional use permit, or rezoning, we want to, at that first stage, for them to submit an exhibit about, let us, we want to start the conversation very early with you about how your trucks are going to access this site. One that we did recently, I think it was mentioned in the early speakers, was the NFI conditional use permit, and that went through Planning Commission this week, I believe it's moving to you guys in December. So, one of the things we did during their review process is request that they submit an exhibit to show how they are going to access the site outside of the Commerce Park. As you'll hear many times, it's difficult to guarantee things, especially over a long period of time, but what we're trying to do is set the tone early to let everybody know, the first user in, that this is how we're going to access the site, we want to make sure that that conversation happens at the very beginning of the stage, we're currently not doing that, and we want to catch every industrial developer and have them submit to us how they're going to come into the property, and we want to approve that and make sure that we're driving everybody down the right path, and hopefully, muscle memory happens from that, again, a multiple strategy scenario. Additionally, we're going to task the Economic Development Department to take on a new effort in addition to what they're doing, they frequently do existing industry visits, they do somewhere in the ballpark of almost 30 a month. This includes meeting with our industrial companies, both south, east, west, and north. We frequently spend time with the general manager, the CEO, even the HR department, we want to add the shipping manager and the shipping and receiving group to that, we want to have their contact information, we want to add the conversation of how are your trucks coming in, frequently, what happens is we'll get a complaint, and then we'll go kind of back-check with those guys and make sure they're doing that, we want to be a little more proactive with that. We're doing some things on workforce development with our industrial developers, we'll add this to our questionnaire and our conversation early on, we're going to track and get the database information for their shipping department as well, so as we have updates, we're going to keep them abreast of those, as we're doing infrastructure improvements, things of that nature. We are doing this in very specific sections with road projects, so, as we're doing different lane closures down on the 58, we're blasting out to our industrial contacts and their shipping folks what the traffic patterns are shifting to, so, we'll just kind of add to that component related to everyday shipping and movement of goods. And I want to give you a couple of examples to that, so, you've heard, and we've had interaction, you've interacted with the city manager and our citizens as well, that Amazon and their trucks have been impactful to this, in the opening of the fulfillment center, and so, thankfully, when we've reached out to Amazon, they pick up quickly, they're looking to be solution-oriented, they've been able to geocode their software to keep trucks out of the Suffolk Meadows neighborhood, once that became a real-life issue, they've actually tracked every driver that's been in there, they're tracking it weekly, to ensure, why are they in there, what happened, giving them a hard time about that, and ensuring that that becomes less of an issue and becomes no issue in the future, so that's been good. Additionally, Amazon has hired a traffic engineer to assess, similar to what we're doing, the impacts of the operation, come up with suggestions, we are actively engaged with their engineer, they've come up with some signage suggestions, similar to what we've done, some different ones, we think having new eyes, different eyes on it is really the way to go, so we're actively engaged with them. Even just a few hours ago, Robert sent a note over to the folks at Amazon about a truck that we saw recently, and so, they responded to us very quickly, they have another suggestion, so we're going to be updating some map material as well, and so, that's an active, fluid discussion. Additionally, I'll share with you, we had an interaction with Planters Peanuts, where we were talking to someone in their shipping department, and as we made a phone call, they weren't there, we got their voicemail, the voicemail said, hey, if you're a truck, and I'm kind of ad-libbing here, come down Main Street, take a left on Washington, and it's like, whoa, 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 that's not how we send trucks, and so, it really came to focus for... focus for us, very, in addition to everything else here, that we really need to be on top of this, a real full-court press, to ensure that as a new shipping manager comes in, they got the message, they know how to do this thing. And so we think that the economic development tasked to do that as one of their top, you know, five kind of questions and interactions will be helpful in that manner. Finally, we've been having some additional conversations with a number of shipping parties and interest groups. And so recently, we've engaged with the Tidewater Motor Truck Association, additionally, the Virginia Maritime Association, and via VDOT, the Virginia Trucking Association. So at TMTA, I've engaged with their CEO or their president. We're going to schedule a presentation first of the year where we're going to give an overview to their truckers' association, tell them where we'd like them to go, where we don't want them to go, and see how we can build upon that relationship. Additionally, the VMA has a breakout group related to shippers and truckers. They've invited us to come out as well. We've talked about maybe getting together some of our industrial groups, whether it's a networking event, and making this a real topic of conversation. And so we think there's a lot of opportunity for us to go dig in a little bit deeper, build some of those relationships. You know, as we're seeing more trucks providing product to the city of Suffolk, we need to make sure that they know how we're doing business, what our expectations are, and that they can successfully maneuver through the city of Suffolk in the routes that we want them to. And so this will be a significant effort for us moving forward, especially into next year. So we're excited about that. Everybody has been really excited and open to having those conversations. I think what we're finding is some of their folks may be challenged as they're figuring out Suffolk and some of the expansion and growth that we're seeing. So it looks like a really good opportunity to have those relationships and engage there. And then finally, we want to ensure that we're taking action at the local level through our ordinances. And so as you can see on your agenda, we have a motion that is to schedule a public hearing on December 7th to restrict trucks on Shoulders Hill Road from Bridge Road to Pewsville, as well as Duchess Way, Baron Boulevard, and Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. This is to deal with some recent complaints and concerns that we've had specifically directly to North Gate Commerce Park and in that area. This will be, I would call, step one. We're continuing to explore how best to tackle things on Nansman Parkway as well. But this will be the first step that we'd like to take into, and you'll probably be hearing from us again as we finalize and pick the best solutions as it relates to potential truck through route restrictions along Nansman Parkway as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Counselor, questions, comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Kevin, thanks a lot. I mean, it's kind of a moving target. It looks like you guys have done a lot of work so far since I asked for this in the last month or so. A couple of things, you know, these trucks are still coming down from 17 down Shoulders Hill instead of using Portsmouth Boulevard. The problem I see with it, and I live right there, so I see them all day long, they're owner-operators. Owner-operators are not employees of Amazon. They're not employees of Wanchi's. They're not employees of anybody in North Gate. They're owner-operators. So I'm an owner-operator. I get a dispatch call that, hey, there's a load at such and such a location for you to go pick up, to take to the Amazon fulfillment center, or the Wanchi's, or whatever back in the North Gate. It doesn't say, tell me where I got to go, where I don't have to go. It just tells me, you have a load, and they're paying me by the mileage to go pick the load up and carry it out there. So the owner-operators, they have their own system, the way they operate. They're not operating on the same system as what Amazon, and it's two things here. One is shipping is one thing. Shipping is where they're shipping it out of there, going to a location. The next part of this is the receiving part of it, where it's coming in and being received at. So there's two components to a trucking company operation. And it's going to take a while to figure this out. Now, I do think that what you've already proposed for the December 7th meeting is a great start. I don't know if that's going to answer all. It's going to take a while. Because they're not all coming off 664. They're coming down off of the James River 17 and then hook a right, because it makes sense. I mean, that's what the GPS or the GIS or whatever is telling them. So this is going to be a long process to try to educate, because I don't know how you're going to touch the owner-operators. They're just an organization of their own. They don't belong to any big group. They more or less operate on their own trucking, their own unit. So we'll see if this signage helps out. If you can cut them off there at 17 and shoulders to down to Pewsville, I think you've got something there, because where are they going to go? There's already a no-through trucks on Pewsville. I mean, they come through Pewsville Road, and that road is barely good enough, well enough for two vehicles to pass on. We knew we were going to have problems, but that's the reason we put the 664 interchange in there at Portsmouth Boulevard, improved the road to four lanes to bring them down, to get them into these locations without having to go through a neighborhood. I don't know why they're in Suffolk Meadows. It just blows my mind. I don't know where they're going in there because there's only one way in and one way out. So that makes it a little difficult when they get in there. So I want to continue the process, and I commend you all for doing what you're doing so far. We'll see if the proof is in it to whether or not it helps. But I kind of wonder how it's going to flow. We get the signage up. That may be a deterrent right there. They see the sign, they may go through, I don't know. And changing the GPS system inputs, if there's a way to do that, might help a lot also. But, you know, I would prefer it was no-through trucks all the way, but we'll see. We'll see if we need to go that far. I know there's some issues there if we go too deep into this. So I'll wait to see what happens. But right now, it's truck traffic through there all day long. And it's getting the citizens a little agitated. It's kind of difficult to get in and out of even their driveways sometimes with these 18-wheelers, because their driveways come right out on the Shoulders Hill. It's not like a secondary ulterior unit or a different four-way road, a four-lane highway. It's a two-lane road where driveways come out onto Shoulders Hill. Can you imagine trying to back out of your driveway, or get out of your driveway with 18-wheelers? And it's not just Amazon. It's all the truckers that are going down into North Gate. Seems like it's picked up quite much, because we've grown in there quite a bit in the last few months, and it looks like we're growing some more. So I'm going to keep a look at it, keep a watch on it, and I'm filming it so I can see every truck that goes down there, so it's not imaginary to me or anybody else. I can share it with them. But I got to have it where these folks can get in and out of their driveways and get out of their neighborhoods safely, because they don't have a second way to go. It comes right out onto the roadway. So I appreciate what you're doing so far. But let's continue the work on this and see if we can squelch this truck traffic down even more. It's not the little guys. It's the 18-wheelers that are 53 feet long, 80,000 pounds. That's a lot of truck. We're not running on a 58, 460, or 17. So just keep it in mind. And I thank you for what you're doing.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Kevin, for your report. And this is something that I think Mr. Ryan and a lot of people there in Suffolk Meadows area has been asking about. And I think you were trying to work hard to come up with a solution to help out in that area. I'm very pleased to know that you're working with Amazon, because that's where I've been hearing a lot of the comments from, is Amatron traffic. But I agree with Councilman Fawcett about the private truckers, and I don't know, it seemed like you'll be talking with them as well. The companies that operate those, they operate under. So I think that's the right tool that you have in your toolbox, to reach out to all of them and let them know what you plan, what our plans are for that area. I'm glad to hear that we are having a public hearing on the 7th of December. That gives the people the opportunity to come out and express themselves exactly what I've been hearing a lot of up in the area about this. But I think you have really done an outstanding job, staff and Amazon working together to come up with this solution, that you can work together to try to improve the condition that has been created out there in the neighborhood. So I'm just waiting to see what the final results will be with this. And I'm hoping that it will be good, that it will benefit all the Shoulders Hill Road and the Suffolk Meadows homeowners as well, because they're right there at 664 with all that beautiful highway. And we spent a lot of money making it available for them to be able to go from North Gate into 664. So I do appreciate that. I'm waiting to see what's going to be the outcome of the final results. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Ward?
Hey, Kevin, I want to get something understood. We mostly talking about tractor-trailers, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Because I haven't seen them. I mean, all right. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Mr. Hughes, thank you very much for your presentation. I got just a few comments. This is not an issue that's going away. This is an issue that we have to continue to address on a regular basis. It's not a one solution. It's multiple solutions with multiple partners and multiple participants all the way around. So we have to do what we can to try to ensure that there are a minimal amount of violations, and then we have to see what we can do to enforce them. I do not know, I was on my phone trying to find the fine schedule in Suffolk to see what the monetary fine was for violating a no-through truck zone. If that's something that we can look at, I think those fines are regulated by the state. I think there's a cap on them regardless of what it is. Might be wrong, but it may be something we can look at also. Once we get the word out there and we kind of, you know, get the fines to where they're significant enough to make an impact, and maybe we also put that on the bottom of the no-through trucks like they do speeding in construction zones. It says speeding in construction zones, fines increased. Some of them I've seen $500, whatever, you know, it's posted on there. So they need to know about that. I appreciate the improved signage, because I've been looking at a lot of it lately. And you're exactly right. A lot of those signs, by the time you get there, is too late. I mean, I wouldn't turn around with a car, nevertheless a tractor-trailer. So the notices need to be early. I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion, you know, when you're riding down 58, doing, you know, going faster than you're supposed to go, and there's little-sized streets, you know, you know you're coming up, or like on 460, you're coming up on Old Myrtle Road, and probably 50 yards before you get there is a little sign that says Old Myrtle Road. So you don't have to slam the brakes on it. It's letting you know you're coming up there. So why don't we, on arteries that are no-through trucks, we could add an additional sign besides the one that's posted right there, and it would say Old Myrtle Road, I'm just using an example, no-through trucks. And that's 100 yards before you get there. And then you could also see the truck, I mean, you could also see the sign from the entrance. I think for the most part, people want to do the right thing. But like going home tonight, it's the same thing. I'll leave here, you know, I'll go down Pitchkettle Road, I'll go to King's Fork, and I'll take a left on Providence, where Providence is no-through trucks. And we have a much improved sign there, but for the most part, if I had already taken a left, you know, I'm not going to back up and continue to go down King's Fork. So that's the kind of thing that I think every road that has no-through trucks, we put some advanced warning on there. Such-and-such road, no-through trucks. Then when you get there, there's another one. Just a thought. I want to thank the staff. I know you guys have been working diligently on this. I've had multiple discussions with the city manager, you know, with what we have to deal with now. There's going to be increased traffic, whether we like it or not. One of the great things about Suffolk is we're growing, but, you know, one of the downsides, we're going to try to manage that and deal with the issues that come with that growth, that comes with the additional traffic from sources other than ourselves. But where we've started engaging Amazon, the GPS thing is huge, and that's what we need. We need that engagement. And you find it, wow, if we do this, maybe we can knock a couple off here, knock a couple off there. It's not going to be a single solution, which I think we can all agree to. But we need to continue to stay focused on it and do exactly what you've been doing. And I want to thank, you know, the manager and all the staff that's been involved in, you know, trying to address this issue with the trucks, and we'll continue to stay on it. Okay, we'll now move to motions. Our first motion is to schedule a public hearing to be held on December 7th. That's Pearl Harbor Day, isn't it? December 7th, 2022, to receive public comment on an ordinance to enter into a lease for restaurant services at the Suffolk Executive Airport. A motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
So moved, Mayor.
Councilman Williams?
Second, Mayor.
A second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on December 7th, 2022, to receive public comment on the restriction of trucks on Shoulders Hill Road from Bridge Road to Pewsville Road, the restriction of trucks on Duchess Way, the restriction of trucks on Baron Boulevard, and the restriction of trucks on Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. A motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
We got a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for December 7th, 2022, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing conveyance of a 30-foot permanent Hampton Road sanitation district's utility easement, a variable width temporary HRSD construction easement, and a 25-foot permanent HRSD egress easement for the HRSD Suffolk Pump Station Replacements Project. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Moved for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor Bennett, can you please pass your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on December 7th, 2022, to receive public comment on conveyance of two land parcels located in Suffolk Industrial Park, tax ID numbers 34C asterisk WHC 19, lot 19, and 34C asterisk WHC 15, lot 15. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Ward?
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Ward, Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
And our last motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, at 4:00 PM unless canceled. The motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the timing guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Doeman, we do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Chris Dove, 852, Colonel Mead Drive, representing self regarding the planning department's use of the zero lot line provision in the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 31-605B2, to circumvent the setback requirement.
As stated, the city planning department is As stated, the city planning department is disregarding the provisions of the UDO and the Code of Virginia to circumvent setback requirements for West Haven Lake, Section 8 subdivision. The zoning administrator and the planning director have asserted that the subdivision need not meet the minimum setback requirements because of the UDO subdivision is a zero-lot line pattern. UDO Section 31-605 allows zero-lot line setbacks. The side building setback on one side of the house may be reduced to zero. UDO Section 31-411 Lot Patterns allows zero-lot lines, minimum side setbacks, zero on one line only, and 15 feet on the other line. The UDO allows zero-lot line patterns having zero feet from one lot line and a minimum of 15 feet on the other. The subdivision plant in question shows 10-foot setbacks on both sides of the lot. No zero setback line exists, and the other side setback does not meet the minimum 15 feet requirement. Additionally, the zoning lot line use pattern is not permitted, is not a permitted provision of the UDO, in that it does not allow for a written determination and a notification requirement of Code of Virginia, Section 15.22286. That states, "When provided by ordinance, the zoning administrator may authorize to grant a modification from any provision contained in the zoning ordinance with respect to physical requirements on lots or parcels of land." If the administrator finds, if the administrator finds in writing that, one, the strict application of the ordinance would reduce or produce undue hardship; such hard, two, such hardship is not shared generally by the other properties in the same zoning district in the same vicinity, such as my neighborhood; three, the authorization of the modification will not be substantially detrimental to the adjacent property, and the character of the zoning district will not be changed by granting the modification. Prior to the granting of the modification, the zoning administrator shall, not may, but shall, give or require the applicant to give all adjacent property owners written notice of the requested request for modification and an opportunity to respond to that request within 21 days of the date of notice. The administrator did not meet the written requirement, and no such notices have been given. I ask Mayor Doeman to deal with these issues in an open and transparent manner that he so frequently proposes or exposes. Publish a request for an advisory opinion from the Commonwealth attorney on these issues and publish the response. I am sick and tired of council members sweeping issues under the rug. Please deal with this openly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Minix, 1209, Mount Pleasant Drive, representing self regarding traffic safety and incident management on Route 58.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. First, let me just share a little recent experience, and I think you heard a little bit about it a little earlier tonight, as recent as last night is when it occurred. So I was leaving an office building in northern Suffolk last night, and I was alerted by a coworker that there had been an accident involving a tractor-trailer on 58 westbound just before the scales. So even before I left the parking lot, I knew that I was going to take an alternate route. So I left the parking lot in northern Suffolk at 4:23. I took Hampton Roads Parkway to Harborview Boulevard, then to Bridge Road, then, we've heard a lot about Shoulders Hill Road tonight, but I used that as well as Nansman Parkway to Willroy Road, in order to get back to 58 and back to my house. And I happen to live in West Haven Lakes, too. But anyway, I pulled into my driveway at 609. So an 18-mile trip that normally takes me 20 to 25 minutes took me an hour and 46 minutes But it wasn't just me. You know, there were thousands of other motors that got to experience that along with me. So I know you're all aware of some of the traffic issues that we all face along Route 58, but it's not just traffic congestion. And it's not just the City of Suffolk's issue either, because I think, as most of you know, part of that stretch of the 58 corridor is also the responsibility of the City of Chesapeake. What we, what I believe we have is really more of a traffic safety and an incident management issue that needs to be addressed. So I know there's several studies that are underway, one to evaluate the feasibility of closing some of the crossovers. There's been studies to look at creating grade separations at some of the intersections along the section of 58 between the Sipsa Landfill and Bowers Hill. I know there's a new flyover ramp going to get built at the Sipsa Landfill to help that intersection there. So there's some things that are in the works. But I have to ask the question is, what are we doing to try to mitigate the high speeds and the major disruptions to traffic when an incident occurs? So I've been involved in traffic and transportation engineering and operations and maintenance of transportation facilities my entire career. So I understand some of the underlying issues probably more than some others. Some of the issues that I see, we've got a driver behavior problem. You know, if we could just get motorists to share the road, not text and drive, not speed, good luck with that one, right? And we've also got roadway design issues. So we could add some lanes to reduce congestion. We can do road safety audits and identify opportunities to eliminate some hazards and make the roadway a little more safe. Or we could eliminate crossovers, even build all new roads and interchanges. But as I'm sure you're all aware, it's going to take years to even get the simplest of projects designed, permitted, and built. So those projects are going to help, but they're a long way off. So I really have a couple of questions tonight. First, what can be done right now, today, to address the safety and incident management challenges that we face every day along the Route 58 corridor? Have we recognized and acknowledged those challenges, and are we allocating the resources to try to address the issue, such as increased enforcement? And not just by the city, but are we working with the City of Chesapeake, our partners, to effect some change in that driver behavior issues? Secondly, is there an incident management plan in place, no offense, Robert, there may be, I'm not sure, that recognizes the alternate routes that motorists have to take to avoid an incident on 58 like yesterday? So, you know, I'm sure you're all aware, if you're going eastbound on 58, and there's an accident between the landfill and Bowers Hill, you don't have many choices. You're either going to take Godwin Boulevard through Chukituck and over through Crittenon Road to get over to Route 17, or you're going to take Willroy Road to Nansman Parkway and ultimately end up over on 664. So there aren't any other alternatives. So, you know, once you're past Willroy Road, you're stuck unless you can turn around, and some people do. And that plan should, but whatever the plan is, an incident management plan should implement some signal timing changes and deploy resources to actively manage that traffic. If there is such a plan, as I said, it wasn't evident last night of anything like that that was implemented. So in closing, being an engineer, my business is not to just identify a problem or an issue and then walk away from it. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to direct my comments at you tonight and then just walk away. I'm in the business of solving problems. So I'll close by saying that I want to help solve this issue. So I'll make myself available to members of council, to Mr. Lewis and the city staff to help try to address these issues and to try to effect some real change in the near term. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Kelly Hangler, 9345, Eclipse Drive, representing self regarding policies and outcomes.
My name is Kelly Hangler, and I am at the stated address that was named. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Butler Barlow, and our city manager. Thank you so much for having me here. Policy. I come up about a lot of things, and I've stated in the past, it doesn't really matter, but as a fact, I'm a physician assistant. And my graduate work that I'm working on currently, and is now transferring to a major, major university to be published here in the United States, is focused on looking at the policies that we have in place. And that Masters of Public Health looks at policy standing to outcome as a social justice platform at large, but mostly as the outcomes when it comes to water quality in general. The problem that we have today is that a watershed improvement plan by many noble and honorable organizations in this community and between here and Allahay County was done as a watershed improvement plan in 2015. I can find no evidence whatsoever of any discussion, however, about silt pollution, which is EPA's number-one point pollution, non-source point pollution. Now, how does this relate over in these grand discussions we're having about traffic? Crittenon Road, when the City of Suffolk took over from VDOT, had a much more robust caretaking situation. At this time, from in 2010, at the last condemnation line on the Chukituck Creek, which was well up past Moore's Point and on the other side at Cedar Creek Point, okay, is now over the Crittenon Bridge. We have bacterial levels in that Chukituck Creek that are worsened. I saw no evidence whatsoever that the watershed improvement plan, which is a great source, by the way, of funding and grant for our cities, all of their programs and multiple waterways in this era of huge federal and state funding, okay, is even mentioned in the last comprehensive plan. Period. I don't know what to do about this other than to keep tracking with DEQ, keep tracking because it is under DEQ, keep working with VDH shellfish, which is where this should go, and most people don't know that swim lane. I just happen to work in healthcare. We need to bring a team together, because the worsening of that creek means loss of seafood commerce for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Period. It is also unsafe, at this extent, to not believe that the entire creek will be shut down and condemned in the future. What is not listed beyond human beings and animals and fecal matter and farms and septic that was attempted was the fact that Oakland, and thank you for putting in the application for that stormwater, they're in Oakland because it was listed to be managed over to an actual stormwater system, and not only stormwater, but sewage and septic, in that watershed improvement plan by the Department of Environmental Quality with the stakeholders, including the city. I do not know what to do when policies fall through cracks and we don't know to look at them, but to come before you and say, please, we have to look at what outcomes we're having in the City of Suffolk, and please list to our grandmothers, our mothers, our fathers, our nieces and nephews, and every other person that comes up here, moms, dads, they all have something to lend. They know the land, they know the soil, they know the water, they know right out the street on their sidewalks. Please, I implore you, because every last one of them are leading back to funding sources. I hate to say it this way, but we're in a world that depends itself upon economic development, and every person that walks up here is a human being attached with a social security number who works a job, who loves this city. And right now, I have condemnation of shellfish oyster beds, and it's not just that, past the bridge into Crittenon Eclipse. I also have an entire area of Oakland that in 2015, it was put in the whip to please bring forward information so that these communities could advocate for themselves on what legislative process they had to follow to bring wastewater into Oakland. And Hobson. And here we are, like it was a surprise, that we could follow the VDH shoreline survey at that time back to homes that were contributing because we have water. And it rains, and it washes out septic, and it washes it into the rivers and the creeks. One, two, three. How many times have I come to you before you and then later been told, bring us new information, Kelly, you can't take us to school, and yet only take us to college? It is your administrative legacy to take what has not been integrated into this new comprehensive plan, to look at it, because you have learned eyes. How can we attach funding? I've been attending those wastewater meetings with the state as part of my grad work. I'm the one that kept saying, please, is there no other funding way? Please talk to the City of Suffolk. I'm advocating, please talk to our council member. I'm advocating. And I read through this whip, and I wanted to sit down and cry, because we're eight years into where we could have been asking for funding for eight years, a lot of it non-matching funds for the City of Suffolk. And not just for the Chukituck Creek, Brewersnet Creek, watershed. I need to be clear to you that there is one for the Nansman River and that first five miles of contaminated river that's so bad you can't swim in it. There are citizens in this city that have given hundreds of thousands of hours collectively since June, when we all got lit up together, together with the work we've all been doing for over five years. We're ready to come together, do anything that we can for this city to attach funding to the problems that we have. And the one thing, and I'll leave this last pin in this note, because I'm not blaming the sand pits, please understand this, but when we say no truck traffic on Crittenon Road, because the crown of that road sends stormwater that is not attended to into the Nansman River and sends it with silt that's coming off of trucks that are beyond the dump trucks coming up and down the crest of that Crittenon Road, it is a peninsula. It is a unique, beautiful, and majestic thing, because it is the only thing that we have that is exactly like Eastern Shore. It cannot be impacted like the inland lands and above it, in the uplands as well. We have silt pollution in the stream beds going into the headwaters of the Chukituck Creek. That silt is what is propagating huge amounts of bacteria. The silt is on top of what is in this watershed improvement plan, the oyster restoration projects. They literally cannot put down shell to let spat attach to it where it's permanently condemned on that creek, because there's so much silt gushing off of Crittenon Road into the ravines, washing out into the storms, as the people down on Crooked Creek Farm. It's not good. We are here to take a running leap into the future, not 15 miles backwards. And I thank you.
Mayor Doeman, we do have one additional speaker registered. Brian Harris, 2455, Lee Cahoon Road, representing self regarding land use.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'll be quick. Got a little bit of a cold, and I'm afraid I'm going to cough all over the place. Slight change in topic. With the traffic, you know, it's at the top of everybody's queue, and no doubt yesterday, everybody had to fight through it to get home. And as I heard and saw that presentation, I was thinking, you know, what are the things, you know, we can do? And I see them pop up as a strategy to try to reduce the traffic. But I wonder, what do we do as a city? Do we ever take a pause and look at our process? And not try to address what the problem is, but maybe take a chance to address our planning, and maybe we could be approaching problems, approaching applications from a different perspective. I've been at this podium a couple times, concerned about a development that was going about my house. And to be frank, I was surprised that the traffic impact study even made it this far. It was loaded with gaps. Numbers didn't add up, and it just didn't look good to me. And I wonder if this traffic problem, and it is a problem, if it may be worth making a deliberate pause and looking at our processes, and how are we planning, or what are the things that we're asking of these applicants to predict this traffic so that we can be, as a city, a little bit more informed about how we move forward with these development efforts, specifically for roads, and just generally where cars are going, where trucks are going to be going, and maybe hold the applicants to a little bit more accountability. Kevin, you and I talked a couple times. I still don't understand how peak traffic is the number that makes it into the staff that plan. If I was in your shoes, I'd wanna know the real number. When I see a number that says peak traffic and it's 250, man, that's something I can get my head around. But if you don't know to ask for the whole number, 2,500 is a whole lot more than 200 in that day. Maybe just showing those whole numbers may give us a little bit more cause for pause and maybe make our planning a little bit more deliberate. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor?
All right, now we move on to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one item regarding boards and commissions, a motion to nominate and appoint Brian Harris to the Agriculture Advisory Committee, serving as the Direct Marketing Representative.
Counsel? Counselperson Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
A move for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow and Councilman Williams.
I second that.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We'll now move on to announcements and comments. At this time, I'll ask interim Director of Media and Community Relations Department Jennifer Moore if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and City Manager. All right, I'll start off the announcements this evening with a reminder that the city of Suffolk will observe the Thanksgiving holiday on Wednesday, November 23rd at noon through Friday, November 25th. Normal operations will resume on Monday, November 28th at 8:30. Trash and recycling collections will be on a one-day delay starting on Thursday. The Economic Development Department is excited to share the news of two recent grand openings. Revision Med Spa and LASIK located on Center Brook Lane offers skincare treatments including facial rejuvenation, laser hair removal, body sculpting and LASIK eye procedures. And next, we have the much anticipated opening of the Home Goods on College Drive. The Home Goods store offers a unique selection of home decor from around the world, all at amazing prices. Both of these exciting new businesses opened earlier this month. Suffolk Parks and Rec is excited to share that they have received two awards at the Virginia Recreation and Park Society Conference this month. The Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail Segment Two was awarded Best New Facility and the Bennetts Creek Park Inclusive Playground was awarded Best New Renovation Edition. Congratulations to the Parks and Rec team for these great accomplishments. The Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts presents Taking Care of Business, an exhibition that takes a look into the businesses of Suffolk, past and present. The exhibit will honor leaders and members of the Suffolk business community with their portraits and stories. The exhibit is on display November 10th through December 17th and is free and open to the The Virginia Museum of Fine Arts is hitting the road and making its way to Suffolk. VMFA On the Road, the Traveling Mobile Museum, is coming to the Suffolk Farmers Market on Saturday, November 19th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with its new exhibition, Revealing an Obscuring Identity: Portraits from the Permanent Collection. This exciting exhibition of painting, photographs and prints will feature the diverse work of the more than 10 artists from all over the world. This exhibit is free and open to the public. The Suffolk Art Gallery will present The Magic Brush from the Blue Heron Chapter of the Sumi Air Society of America. The exhibition will be on display from December 9th through January 20th. An opening reception for the exhibit will be held on Friday, December 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. All exhibits and receptions at the art gallery are free and open to the public. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. The 2022 Suffolk Holiday Season officially begins this Friday, November 18th with a grand illumination ceremony at the Market Park in downtown Suffolk. Festivities begin at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the lighting of our 32-foot tree, families will enjoy the horse-drawn carriage rides, kids' crafts and pictures with Santa. There will be a special choral performance from the Oakland Elementary School Choir and of course, this event is free and open to anyone. For more information, including parking instructions, check out Visit SuffolkVA.com. Suffolk Parks and Rec is excited to celebrate the holidays at the Third Annual Suffolk Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park. The drive-through holiday light display will be on daily display from November 25th to December 30th, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. The display will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And as always, this event is free and open to the public. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. Start your holiday shopping at the Annual Artisan Gift Fair. Join Suffolk Tourism for the annual Outdoor Holiday Market in conjunction with Farmers Market, featuring over 30 vendors, offering artisan quality crafts, jewelry, food and so many more other holiday-inspired gift ideas. The Artisan Fair will be held on Saturday, December 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Open Air Suffolk Visitor Center Pavilion. The pavilion will be festive with holiday music, face painting, balloon animals and of course, a visit from Santa. The Artisan Gift Fair is free and open to the public. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.com. View the sights and sounds of the 2022 Suffolk Holiday Parade on Saturday, December 10th at 7:00 p.m. Find the best spot to watch the floats, equestrian units, marching bands and festive vehicles as they make their way down West Washington Street over to North Main. The grandstand will be in front of the old SunTrust Building, so be sure to grab your seat and catch all the great performances. This year's theme is Lights, Camera, Holiday. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. And of course, on your screen, there are the various ways residents can stay connected to the city of Suffolk happenings. Thank you for your time this evening and have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well now moving on to announcements from City Councilmen. Councilman Williams, lead it off. Let me get you. Bam, there we go.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank those speakers who came out tonight and spoke. Again, as always, you know, we're listening, so please continue to come and voice your opinion and let us know exactly how you feel about what's going on in our city. I had the honor of attending the Suffolk Firefighters Badge Penning Ceremony on Thursday. It was a great event. You know, you need to take the time and go by the Fire Department and the Police Department from time to time just to reach out and let them know how much we appreciate them. They're doing a lot of good things and they're not told edoof how much that they are welcome and how much they mean to us and our city. Also, I would like to thank the City Public Works Department and the Railroad Company for repairing the crossing on East Washington Street near the Pier Gas Station. Glad to see that happen. Excuse me, I'm kinda congested here. Also, I would like to thank the Public Works Department for installing the 25 mile per hour speed limit signs in the 400 block of Hunter Street. With that, I'd like to say, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and good night.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, Mayor. Again, along with Councilman Williams, attended the badge penning for the Fire Department. It was a great event. Some wonderful stories that were told about the firefighters and the lives they've saved and the efforts they've made and it's just great to know that we have such an outstanding Fire Department and then Police Department in our city. It's just wonderful to have that last. I commend you, Chief. And your relationship is unbelievable with your team. That's unbelievable. I also attended the Economic Development Authority meeting this past week. You know, we don't thank them enough for the effort that they do to our city and for our help. They are an outstanding authority and I just wanna give them a pat on the back and praise them a little bit. And lastly, I do wish everyone here a happy Thanksgiving. Hope it's peaceful and safe and enjoyment. And please remember, individuals that do not have, and if you can give, give and help them. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I'd like to also thank the Fire Department for their awards. Kudos to what the councilman said. Some of the stories are amazing stories that you don't hear about them all the time, but some of the stories were outstanding. And Chief, you do a great job and you tell that the Fire Department have your energy because you always seem to have a lot of energy. But you did a great job, man. I really enjoyed hearing the great work that they have done and even they had two police officers who tagged team in to saving somebody, a young kid's life in a fire in the building in the house. I had a great pleasure of attending the 47th Annual Hampton Roads Leadership Prayer Breakfast. When I first got that invitation, I didn't realize it was a prayer breakfast. I just thought it was a leadership breakfast. So when I attended, I was very impressed with all the ministers was there and all the people that had prayer. And so, one particular name was there and they had prayer on it. It surprised me. I had to, I thought I was looking different. I was, what? Okay. And it happened to be our great mayor, Mike Doome. I said to myself, now I had to hear this. I think Councilman Goldberg would be proud of that prayer, man. Yeah. And so, I listened, it was kinda good. I didn't know we had a possibility of two preachers there because we had Police Chief Al Chandler there and I knew he wasn't knocking out the park, but I had to see, I had to witness the mayor. So I think we'd be proud of the mayor. We're well-represented if we had the fire, some of the Fire Department there, but it was great. He asked earlier, I wish you would have recorded. You would have been very surprised, but he did a good job, man. I'm proud of you. I also attend Metropolitan Baptist Church. It was an event there with our good citizens of Suffolk. Johnny Edwards preached the service and he preached about Jesus died at 33. And it was a good sermon and one thing you have to when you go to church, and I have my family there, but I have my little grandson, he's about nine years old, and Mr. Edwards called his name and he was so excited, he said, I had to go talk, I wanted to go talk to the granddad, I wanted to talk to the preacher. And he told Mr. Reverend Edwards, he was so happy, he called his name, he wanted to cry. But what happened was, later on in the week, he was talking about Jesus died at 33. When young kids say things like that, they listening, especially in prayer and in churches. Like, I get excited when he gets, you know, remembering what the preacher said. Sometimes it's hard for people to remember what the preacher said, what the sermon was about. But it was great, you know, I had a good time. I appreciate Pastor Hobbs mentioning about the hard work that me and Mr. Edwards do in the city of Suffolk. Very seldom I get them accolades, but that was great too with the newspaper. I thought that was real fine for him to know that we do make a difference in the city of Suffolk. Couple of things I wanted to say, and one of them is this, we had a meeting at the Huntersville Civic League. It was a, I don't know if it meant with town hall meeting when Mark was there, about recreation. Some of the things that hit them and they kept going, I thought they would be here tonight. There was concern about the new Bennetts Creek Recreation Center. And like, you know, I'm always asking, how can the kids, the little children get up there from Huntersville, College Square? How can they get there? And what was said was, we have to get some type of transportation because to go from there with all that traffic, it bothers the parents. So I hope we can work on something, some type of grant or transportation that the kids from College Square, Pewsville and Huntersville can be able to get there. That's a concern, that's a real concern. We had about seven to 10 people, but I think if Mark was there, he was there, he might have left now, but we stayed on that about 45 minutes an hour. We really drilled Mark, but they're doing a great job. They liked the playground, what's they gonna put up there, but we're just concerned with how we can get them young kids to that new Recreation Center. I'm gonna change a little bit the politics now, but I wanna congratulate the winners that won the election and I also wanna thank the people that ran. You're running for the position or any position, you have, most time you have a reason. The reason is, I wanna thank the ones who wasn't fortunate this time to think about making this city better. And I think the people that who run, who get involved, that's what their intentions are, doing what the best they can do to help, bring ideas or make the city better. So the ones who wasn't fortunate enough to win, I thank y'all for running. I think it's good to see people wanna get involved in our community. And this one, I just wanted to say because sometimes people have the tendency to say things or ask things and forget. And this is about myself. I ran three times and three times I won. And them three times, I have always been opposed. Somebody always ran against me and most of the time I win by the same margin. And one thing I just want the people to understand, that I wasn't elected, I wasn't appointed, I was elected. And when you get elected more than once, you realize that the people that vote for you, they trust you. As long as I've been on this council, that's one of the most important things that I have for me, that they trust me, I'm gonna do what's best, not for just them, but the city of Suffolk. We have been going through a couple of things the last three or four months and one of the things that I have noticed, that the trust factor, that's important to me. And like, when people come up, like Councilman Williams said, we like for y'all to come up because some things we look at different. Just like the night we tabled a pass one and tabled another. But one thing about it, that as I've been on council, most of the time, that everyone up here have an interest for this city. And I just wanna remember that I've been opposed three times and I've been elected three times. And it's not easy for you to be re-elected and it's not easy for people to vote for you when you think that you don't have their best interests. But I do and I appreciate that. And I'm so proud of the people that came out and vote this time. Like I said, they have an interest in this city and I think they want the city to go forward like I am, like I feel. And I think that some decision we make is a decision that we want this city to be better. But then I'll say, God bless.
Counselperson Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I should start off by saying thank you for last Tuesday. I'm proud to be here and proud to continue to be here and thanks to everyone. I just, thanks to everyone for voting. It was great to see the turnout and the fact that people wanna take an interest, which leads me to say, first of all, thank you to staff for the presentations tonight. We always appreciate the information that you bring to us and keeping us up to date and again, it's greatly appreciated. But also thank you to the folks, not just the ones that are here tonight, but people that get in touch with us to let us know what's going on and what their concerns are. I always appreciate hearing from people because I can't be everywhere at once, so always good to get phone calls and emails and texts and to hear what's going on. But particularly appreciate the folks that came out tonight to City Council, appreciate your dedication and your interest in what's going on in your city. And thanks also to our speakers and to people who are willing to step up and serve. So appreciate those folks. Just a little bit of a side note, I was really excited to welcome the sixth cohort of the Virginia Agriculture Leaders Obtaining Result. This is a program called Valor that's a leadership program at Virginia Tech and they were in Suffolk this past weekend for their Tidewater Seminar and was happy to visit with those folks. And they stayed in Suffolk and they had dinner at Nansman Brewing Station and enjoyed the hospitality of the city of Suffolk. And again, excited to, always excited to have folks from Virginia Tech here in our Want to talk a little bit about Thanksgiving. Um, I want to talk a little bit about Thanksgiving. Hopefully, hopefully everybody will have a great Thanksgiving to my farmer friends that are not finished with their harvest. Uh, hang in there. We've got a, a ten-day stretch, excuse me, of sunny, dry weather and hopefully we can all get finished up. Um, uh, I know it's been, uh, the rain is always a challenge this time of year, but hopefully everyone will get finished soon. And as everyone celebrates their Thanksgiving dinner, um, I hope you will pause for a moment to remember the folks that worked really hard to put all that stuff on your table because it's not an easy job. Uh, we do it because we love it and, um, hopefully everybody appreciates it. And with that, I'll say, uh, Happy Thanksgiving and good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Manager, if you would, I'm still concerned about the morning traffic that's going into North Gate. They're backing up so bad out there on Shoulders Hill and on the Parkway that they're fighting one another to get into work. And it, it's just right there in the morning, it's between six-thirty and about eight o'clock. Seems to be the impact time. And we got to find a way to make that thing flow a little better for those people so they can get into work, so that they won't, uh, be cutting each other off and blowing horns and doing all the motions that go with it. Um, Thanksgiving's coming up. I want everybody to have a great holiday Thanksgiving, but let's take it one step further. Let's remember the homeless that are out there, the people that are less fortunate. Most of us are probably fortunate enough that will have a good Thanksgiving. I want to applaud our councilmember, Leotis Williams, because he does a humanitarian giveaway every year in our city, normally over a thousand turkeys he gives away. And that'll be upcoming this week on, I think, Saturday, correct, Leotis? So I want to applaud him because he's been doing this for a number of years and countless numbers of turkeys have been given away. But the homeless, you know, we, we got to figure out something, how to deal with that. Um, so just keep in mind that if you can help somebody, you know, you see someone falling down, lend a hand to pick them up. Don't let them stay down. Get them up. If you can help them, help them. Congratulations to all those firefighters. I was not able to attend your last week, Thursday, awards. It was an awards give, um, an awards for each firefighter for doing so many great things in our city. Humanitarian to life-saving was just, I heard a lot of the feedback on it. And I can always tell you, I, I, I'm sorry I missed it. I couldn't help missing it. I don't miss many of them, but those are my heroes along with my police officers. Thanks, Chief. You got some people out there too that step up to the plate and it doesn't go unnoticed. So to all those, Chief and your department, both of you, you can be rewarded that you have a workforce behind you that respects you and produces such a great product to protect the lives and property of our city. It's, it's next to none, next to none. I've had the misfortune of having to ride in an ambulance in this city twice in the last few months. And I can't tell you, the treatment I got has been just top shelf. I mean, they hopped on me like June bugs and they got me. And they took care of me. And, uh, it was a good feeling and I really needed that support at the time they showed up. Parks and Rec, they always do, do a good job and, you know, they, they do a lot of things we don't realize. They don't get a lot of recognition, but they do a lot of great things. So City Manager, you know, Parks and Rec is, is right up there at the top. They do a lot of good stuff. Um, thanks to all the speakers that came up tonight. You know, we, we kind of juggled a little bit here when we had some feedback and we learned some things and we were listening and hopefully we get some answers and get the, get the things moving in the right direction. Um, I want to congratulate all those people that ran for public office this last election. Whether you won or lost, you still put the effort forward. And to those that won, they move on and they'll do the job that they're elected to do. For those that did not, please keep your head up. Work hard the next time. There's always going to be another time. So to those, I want to say thank you for working hard, whether you won or lost. And of course, Ms. Barlow and our Vice Mayor won their race along with Tim Johnson. So I congratulate those folks for that. Thank all the city staff, City Manager. We got a lot of great things going on in this city. They work hard and we beat them up a little bit, but, uh, we mean well and we just try to get the answers that the citizens are looking for. So it's not, it's not something that personally, it's, but you're doing a good job and I appreciate it. Uh, just keep in mind that we are starting the holiday season. This is the start where, of course, I think we started holiday in July because I've seen Christmas trees out in July, it kind of blows my head off. But anyway, um, it's the holiday season and we got to think safe. We got to think safe. You have to think of your surroundings. The tragedy of the UVA, three football stars that got taken this past week is just unbelievable. The Iowa students, six of them are slaughtered in their homes. The Walmart gentleman this morning, and not in this city, but in another location, pulled a butcher knife out and stabbed crap out of a kid. For what? Nothing. So you have to be aware of your surroundings, no matter whether you're getting in your car, going home, getting in your garage, or whether you're going to a shopping center, you've got to be paying attention and lock up everything around you. It's the start of the Christmas tree time. We got people putting Christmas trees up already in their homes. So you got to be thinking that you're doing the right thing with your Christmas trees. If you're not, that Fire Chief is the guy, you want to be talking to his Fire Prevention Bureau to tell you what's safe and what not safe to help you so that you don't become a tragedy in your household during the Christmas holiday. We want everyone out there to have a safe holiday season. It only takes one second to change your life. So please remember the safety of the holidays. In several of our organizations, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department are doing children's toy drives. Um, if you can go by and lend a hand and drop something off for an under children, a child that might not have anything at Christmas, open your heart, a few bucks, you know, go out there and, and buy something and allow a child to have a good holiday. Starting early because of the fact that they're starting early and we're going to be coming up on the Christmas holiday before you blink. So with that, I want to thank everybody tonight on the DASH for doing such a great job and I'll see you in the next meeting.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
No one did.
You were very brief, Councilman. That's a joke.
Takes you to eight-thirty.
First, I would like to say, uh, congratulations, Chief, uh, for all the promotions and, um, great turnout, families and all. And I think that, uh, we cannot thank our public safety, uh, people enough for police and fire, for all that you do to keep our citizens safe. And, um, we cannot thank you enough. I just want to say that very briefly, not go into a lot of details. I think everybody know pretty much how I feel about, uh, our public safety people. So again, thank you very much for all your, uh, hard work and keeping us safe. Uh, also, I'd like to say that, uh, we have been talking about it with some of the people tonight has been talking about planning and development and application time of not knowing when and how much time they have to start responding to some of the applications. The mayor and I and manager have talked about this and we're looking at changing that policy wherein that people will be able to know, uh, a long period of time, not just adjacent property owners where the law requires you get notification, but it be where other citizens that live in the community can go online and see exactly what is taking place, what is being requested and what is be put in that area. So I think that's going to be a great tool for the citizen time whenever we get that worked out to, uh, so people will know and plenty of time to get the comments of their concerns answered. Uh, just want to make that known because I know, uh, some people saying they're not getting much notification on things that's being changed. Um, also, I would like to say to, uh, all the voters that voted in, uh, November eighth election, thank you very much for your support and your vote. And I will continue to work my heart out to do whatever I can for citizens of Cypress Borough and the citizens of Suffolk. Again, I appreciate you putting your trust in me and I will not let you down. I say that I want to be a voice for the people and I do listen to the people and listen to their voice. So again, thank you all for coming out tonight, sharing your voice. And I'm sure that you, some people say they're not listening, but I disagree with you. I think every one of us up here listen to what you say. We might not agree, but we listen. So again, thank you for being able to come and share your concerns with us. I think that's great that we are able to do that. Um, also, uh, the Salvation Army is out now doing the Christmas ring and they're looking for volunteers, uh, people to work, to ring the bell for Christmas. And they're getting ready for stock, uh, stocking stuffings and all that for the children and people that's really, uh, doesn't have any, uh, Christmas coming there to their homes. And they're trying to make sure that every child be able to have something for Christmas, that they will, uh, not be left out. And with Thanksgiving coming, there'll be many families that doesn't have anyone to sit to the table with them. Let's keep those people in prayer and think about those that are less fortunate than we are. And if we can, in any way, try and help someone else and not just ourselves and our families. We should do everything we can because I see, I'm sure you all as well, see people, more people standing on the street corner now, uh, with signs asking for donations and whatnot. So it's kind of tough out here. So let's not forget others when we are doing our Christmas shopping and thanking God for what he's done for us. Let's thank God that we can help others as well. Thank you and may God continue to bless you.
All righty, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. I'll try to be brief. Someone took some of my time, but I'm going to get slower. There was quite a bit going on the last couple of weeks. I went to Elephant's Fork Elementary School. They had to bring you a legislator to school day. You forgot to mention Vice Mayor was there and Councilman Johnston was there. We got a little tour and a little idea what's going on with, within the schools as far as the facilities. No really surprises there. Uh, we all know that, uh, schools across the country, across the state, everywhere, a lot of them are needing replacement or repair. Uh, there's no way that there'll ever be enough local funding to do what we need to do. Uh, we need some help from the state. We need some help from the feds and hopefully be in a position to work on a few grants that are, uh, coming at the state level. Suffolk Fire and Rescue, uh, Promotion Ceremony, three new battalion chiefs. That's a lot of battalion chiefs in one time, I think. Three battalion chiefs, four captains, six lieutenants, a lot of upper management. And, uh, these folks have been with the department for a long time. Um, Chief does his excellent, excellent job. I mean, I've dealt with a lot of organizations and morale is morale and morale is usually the way it is, is directly reflected, uh, on their leadership. So it's not what you talk about, it's what actually happens, what you do, what your men do. You know, you lead by example. Don't ask them to do anything you wouldn't do yourself. And we have that there and Police Department also. I mean, that's, that's what it's all about and that's what's going to help our retention and recruitment. Uh, always a great time. Hampton Roads, also, on the eleventh, went to the Hampton Roads Council of Veterans, Veterans Day. It was supposed to be a parade. Uh, it was Thursday, well, Veterans Day it rained, so they called off the parade. It was supposed to be a huge parade starting in Virginia Beach. And, um, told the city clerk, I've probably committed to a few extra things I shouldn't have, but I'd like for Suffolk to be represented. If it's Hampton Roads, then Suffolk needs to be represented. Uh, anyone who's subscribing to the Virginia Pilot, I would like for you to write the editor and let them know that Suffolk is part of Hampton Roads. The Virginia Pilot did not bother to put the election results from Suffolk in the paper. And believe me, I have, you know, I've emailed and texted a few times and I think more of our citizens, uh, need to contact the paper also and let them know, we're not just a little part of Hampton Roads, we're a big part of Hampton Roads. And any Hampton Roads article needs to include our city. Our cities, our, our citizens deserve, uh, that coverage as well. So you have another form of getting your news. Uh, but I tell you, the, the most amazing thing of that, and I'll be close to, there were a couple of vets there that had a double tree and a couple in particular, we had a Vietnam War vet that was also a POW. But most impressive was a young man by the name of Stephen Boone, who was a, who was a ninety-eight-year-old World War II veteran that fought in the Battle of the Bulge. I mean, it's just, just to look at this guy and think what they went through in, in that time and why this is considered the greatest generation. Uh, but anyhow, that's all, all I got to say about that. But that was very nice and we were represented there also. Um, on the fifteenth, uh, Councilman Ward alluded to the Hampton Roads Leadership Prayer Breakfast. I volunteered for that early. I didn't know that the Chief was going to be there also. And, uh, he mentioned picking up the program and being surprised. I was more surprised than he was when I got there. You know, so we had to be there at six-forty and I'm, the only have to, the only prayer breakfast I'm used to is what we have here. So I pull up the convention center, we're at six-forty. There were like nine-hundred-and-fifty people there. I mean, this was, this was, this is not, I've got a lot of talents, it's probably not my best venue. You know, the Police Chief, on the other hand, I mean, this is just, well, just a piece of cake for him. I mean, to me, I'm a little like a fish out of water and I look at the program and, and, um, former Congressman Randy Forbes is speaking and of course, our chief is, former Governor Bob McDonnell speaking, Vice Admiral William Lee, you know, three of the other, anyhow, mayors. But anyhow, we were represented as well that time. Suffolk was represented as well as all those other Hampton Roads cities together. We're the only one that had two speakers, myself and the Chief. We had representation from the Fire Department. The Chief was there, a couple of his men. Chief Chandler had a couple of his deputy chiefs there and a few officers also. And it was very well done. Usually these aren't, as they say, my bailiwick, but I would recommend that if you have the time, go to YouTube and just put in twenty-twenty-two Annual Hampton Roads Leadership Prayer Breakfast. Don't look at my stuff, just skip all through that and go to the keynote speaker. This was one of the best keynote speakers for me that I've ever listened to. Some of those things I just, okay, well, I can't wait for it to be over. This was good. What is it? The individual's name was David Barton and his presentation was all fact. It was historical evidence, and I'll just read a little bit here. Historical evidence how the undeniable power of prayer has sustained America through times of great crisis, going back to the formation of the Constitution. Everybody got together and they prayed for two hours. Uh, they talked about praying in, in combat, especially during World War One, during World War Two. It had actual clips, you know, black and white clips of Franklin Delano Roosevelt speaking, of Dwight D. Eisenhower speaking and how they mentioned just in general, prayer and God. And what I enjoyed the most is when he was talking about George Patton. Everybody, you know, George Patton's kind of guys, everybody don't know, but during the, the Battle of the Bulge before that, they were kind of getting, the Allies were getting hammered because the weather was bad. It was raining, so they couldn't get any air support. At that time, the Allies had air superiority. That's the best thing they had going for them. The Germans didn't. And the Germans were basically kicking our butts because our, uh, tanks were no match for Panzer tanks, the, um, Bradley, something like that. But anyhow, our, yeah, our tanks were no match for the German tanks. So Patton started praying for this rain to let up. Didn't work for a couple of days. Then he gave every single, every single soldier got a card and it had a prayer on it. He said, "Everybody, I'm ordering everybody to pray. I mean, everybody is praying for this rain to let up." It didn't work for a couple of days. Then he went to church himself and it, and it has a picture, it's all documented, a lot of things he wrote. And he's, he's in church. lot of things he wrote. And he's in church, he's looking up, and he's basically talking to God, and he's not talking good to him. He said, you know, maybe you're, you know, you haven't realized, you're not listening to me, you know, whose side are you on? And he said a few things he probably shouldn't have said. I wouldn't have said them in church or a house of worship, but he said them. Well, lo and behold, it stopped raining, and they got their superiority and rest. And when it was all over, Patton went back to church again, and he apologized for God what he said before, because he had made it stop raining and everything worked out right. But you're going to listen to this. I talk about it. It is absolutely, I mean, I listened to every word that he had to say. It's just, it's just so awesome how emphasizing moral, religious, and constitutional heritage of our country and demonstrates, I'll read the bad part, "Barton emphasizes the history that demonstrates the United States was founded as a mostly God-fearing nation based on many biblical principles." So it's just, I mean, look at it. It was awesome. Sister Cities, we went there the other night. Councilman Goldberg was there. They had their annual meeting. George Birdsong gave a presentation of Amadeo Obici, like everything from when he was, I mean, he was up there a long time. He started from when he was in diapers, and they put him in a thing, and they sent him over here all the way through, whatever. I mean, it was very interesting, but I thought George would go pass out for it, we finished. But an amazing guy, and also, Kings Fork High School has started a, what was it, a Suffolk Sister City Club, their IB program, about five high school kids out, very impressive with what they had to say, how they said it, and what they were doing. I too want to congratulate Vice Mayor, Councilman Johnson, Councilperson Bala Varla, for their reelection, and welcome John Rector in his new role, representing the Suffolk Borough. Councilman Goldberg, sorry to see you retire, but then we've got a good replacement. I look forward to working with everybody on here now, folks that have been here for another two years, serving our citizens and continuing to move our city forward. I think we've got a lot of consistency in what we're doing, and I think we're making great progress, continuing to move our city forward the best we can. Thank everybody who ran for office. It's, that's no joke either, you know, just deciding you're going to do it, and then when you get it, sometimes you say, well, is this really what I wish for? But all in all, I mean, you've got to, you've got to be dedicated to the city to make that commitment, or even, you know, run for office. I will not be, for the first time, let's say, I've been to the turkey giveaway for 12 years. I've missed one. Unfortunately, I will miss the second one. Breaks my heart. I've got to go take care of an issue out of town, but I'll be there in spirit. Councilman Williams knows that, and I appreciate everything that you do every year. You know, I've been there every year. The Humane Society won't be coming this year because they gave all their stuff away at Venice Creek Park, so we didn't get reloaded again. But the blessing that he provides to the folks that, you know, that need it, the looks on their face and appreciation that they have speaks for itself. And with that, oh, one other thing, and then I'll go to the quote. The Vice Mayor did allude to us putting some processes in place, maybe to allow for more information to be disseminated before we vote on it, more time for citizen input. And actually, I think the original suggestion came from our deputy manager, Mr. Kevin Hughes over there. I mean, I was, I was coming up with some ideas, maybe we should do this, maybe we should do that, and he said, wait, I was thinking about it, and VDOT doesn't weigh in on every single decision that is made as far as zoning and rezonings or conditional use permits and all. But there's a threshold where they do, and it may be based on the number of homes, if it's like more than 55 or 60 homes, and then VDOT has to be consulted with it, and we have to get input from them before it moves forward. And what we're thinking is, in the, in the city, we can establish our own threshold. We don't want to make a huge process out of everything. If it's mundane and there's not much to it, then let's let it fly like it is. But if it's a pretty, if it's a good-sized project, and I don't know what the parameters will be, then what I envision is, when it goes, and we're going to have some developers that are probably not going to be happy with this, because it's going to slow the process down by at least 60 days. But what I'm anticipating is if it meets a certain threshold, and if everybody agrees to it, because like I tell people all the time, they say, well, you're mayor, you can do this. No, I get one vote. I'm the mayor, I'm not the king. So just going through the thought process, if it reaches a particular threshold, when it goes to the Planning Commission the first time, it'll just be information only, no vote. Right now, it's, you get the submit, or it goes there, you get a staff presentation, okay, vote, boom. Let's say it hits a particular threshold, then the Planning Commission will just get that presentation the first time. So when the Planning, when the Planning Commission gets it, our citizens get it. And then 30 days from now, it goes back to the Planning Commission, and they'll actually vote on it, and then do the same thing in, at City Council, where it comes to us the first time, if it's a large, controversial, a lot of input, stuff going on, you know, okay, so we're not even asking for a vote. We do a presentation, and it will be just a presentation, and then the following meeting, then we'll have a vote in a public hearing. But what it'll do is, is, I think, you know, as Kevin said, it just kind of puts the brakes a little bit on these larger projects, because the process is the process, and the process is the same for the small ones as it is the big ones. And lots of times with us, I mean, we only get 30 days to look at it. And if it's not controversial in the Planning Department, sometimes not that, but that's the first time that we notice, because there'll be some pushback at planning, but we're expected to look at it and vote on it the very next month. So something like this would be, I think, be a welcome change, and also, like I said, just kind of put the brakes on the larger projects, so we'll have more time to analyze it, more time to get public input, and more opportunities for the public to offer that input. So with that, I'm going to my quote of the night. Don't forget the tree lighting on Friday, and that quote is from W.T. Purkiser, P-U-R-K-I-S-E-R, who everyone knows was a preacher scholar and author who passed away in 1992. And that quote is, "It's not what we say about our blessings, but how we use them is the true measure of our Thanksgiving." And with that, I would say good evening, and ask for a motion to adjourn, Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
You okay with it?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn from Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussions in the motion here, and then councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
All right. Did you miss it? This meeting is hereby adjourned.